We will call the order, the budget hearing slash county board. Those with a computer, we will take roll. And I have no one on the screen, correct Danny?
Okay.
Okay. And I have everyone present except Fraser and Swan. All right. And we will rise for a moment of silence, followed by a bunch of allegiance.
Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We intend to protect our country, one nation, one other, indivisible, universal, just as long. The item is to approve the agenda. I have a motion, a second, and any other discussion. Call the vote.
Mr. Prince, are you, is your iPad working?
Yes.
Okay. It says still don't hit the green button.
Don't tell them what button.
Yeah.
Hit a button.
All right. Item four, that passed unanimously. We will openly conduct the public hearing for the 2026 Arquette County Budget. Ron?
Yep. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ron Arquette, County Administrator. Welcome. I do ask that this presentation will take approximately a half hour and may run a little over. I will take questions at the end. I'm going to try to push through the presentation and then I'll take questions.
Glove it up, please.
Danny, you have that.
That's it.
Okay, this is going to be a challenge, two hands here, but I'll do my best. All right. I do want to review just very quickly the budget process itself. For those of you that have not attended a public hearing regarding the budget, for those of you elected officials that haven't sat through this for at least a year, I just very quickly want to go through the budget process itself. The budget planning process started in June. The budget was built from the ground up by initially including a 4% cost of living increase, that's a COLA, and a step increase. I adjusted that down though to a 2% COI in the final budget. And that final budget is what has been posted. We also included a 75% county paid health insurance premium for qualified staff. I try to keep that consistent with what we are also paying the union. So it's the same across the board for all staff. I also try hard to do a five-year trend analysis, and that is used to determine the expenditures and the revenues, but there's been so many outliers in the past few years, it's been more and more difficult to actually do a valid five-year trend analysis. Not only did we have COVID during this time, but one time state aid flows in, pulled back, it's very difficult for me to look then back beyond five years because of inflation and just other things that, you know, happened during those years. It makes an actual analysis very difficult. But I still, I look at those numbers. Can you hear me okay now with this?
Use the stand.
Well?
Yeah.
Wrong size.
Okay, I will try to hold it up closer. Okay, good. So after that, after I do the trend analysis, each department head was instructed to try to keep their budgets at zero over the current year, both on expenditures, and then we try to increase our revenues where we can. That's a common directive I give all the department heads every year. If you can keep your budgets flat, try to keep them flat. Department budgets are then presented to the oversight committees for approval. That's usually vetted before they get that far with me and the department heads going through them line by line. And then once they get to the oversight committee, they're vetted within that committee itself. The finance staff then go back and review all the department budgets line by line and make further adjustments before sending those final budgets to exec and finance, where usually it's conducted over a two-day period. Every department head comes in, presents their budget as adjusted. Sometimes we make further adjustments during that final exec and finance and then vote on the final budget. And again, that's what's going to be presented here tonight, that final product. And you are all taking part in that final process right now with the public hearing. So I encounter many challenges, as I've already alluded to with this budget. Health insurance rates continue to rise with no end in sight. I, it's very difficult for us to predict what health insurance premiums are going to be given to us by the state. We have seen a spike a couple of years ago of over 16% for a health insurance premium. That's the health insurance premium that the county, I'm talking about the county's share now when I talk about this, because that's what finds its way into the budget, the county's share of the premium. And the county, over a period of time, and I'll pick up on this later, has been pretty generous with the staff. At one year, a couple, well, several years ago now, they paid up to 82% for the health insurance premium. But since that time, we've had to draw that back because of these increased health insurance premiums. The employee wage increases are also now below the rate of inflation, and they have actually been for a number of years. Several years ago, we were seeing inflation trend upwards of over 8%, and there was just no way the county could give staff an 8% increase for a cost of living. It would just, we just could not find it in the budget to do that. This continues to be below market rates for many of the positions that are funded. This, of course, affects morale, retention, and continues to be a recruiting problem, especially for some of the positions that require advanced degrees or advanced certifications. Therapists come to mind. It's very difficult to recruit for those positions because we just cannot pay what the private sector pays for those positions. Other challenges include increase to the operating costs coupled with limited revenue that undermines our ability to absorb the costs of maintaining the same, same level of service. Adding to this situation, the expansion of some of the services will need to be addressed as citizen and client needs increase. Approximately half of our population here in the county are either under the age of 18 or over the age of 65. And those two groups are the groups that tend to use or utilize more services than those that fall outside of those categories. So we have to look at that in terms of the future and what does that mean for those services that the county can continue to provide. Now, looking at the resolution, which is, that keeps me in check, it also keeps our general fund in check, it is also a challenge. Because Resolution Number 40, 2015, stipulates that our general fund be maintained at a reserve of between 17 and 25% at standard government protocol to keep it within those boundaries. This also allows the reserve fund to be available to ensure at least three months of operation expenses are covered should we have a problem. I like to personally keep four months in reserve. I tell you, it kind of may, I'm savoring that way, I'm a little cautious, but with our last audit, and I'll pick up on that too a little bit later, shows that we were well above the 25%. So when I was doing this budget, I, I knew where we were at. You all, the elected officials, knew what was presented for our audit and saw what those results were, and we were well above that 25%. So when I created this budget, even though it was a challenge, I knew we had some money to be made available. Some of you may wonder, well, why don't we keep 30% in there? Why don't we keep 50% in there? Well, that's your money that you pay in taxes that is just sitting there not being utilized. So that's why I do not want to go much over that 25%, because again, it's your money and it needs to be put to work. So I show this every year, and it's a little alarming, but I think it makes the point. That when we were looking at, and I'll actually come over here, when we're looking at the 29 or the 19 budget, the draw on the general fund, that's how much money we take at the end of tonight, we'll be figuring this out, at least I hope, that we need to take from the general fund to create a balanced budget. The county is mandated by the state, we have to produce a balanced budget. Ironically, the state does not, but we have to. So in 2019, we had to take 687,000, I'll just round here, we had to take back from the general fund to create a balanced budget. 2020, 2021, 895,000. 2022, we spiked way up. Had to take 1.3 million, almost 1.4 million from the general fund to be able to balance our budget. I knew at that point in time, and this was where, when the county decided to do the 82% insurance premium, we also hired several staff that year that was not planned for, I came on board about mid-year through that process. When I looked at that, I decided, well, we can't, we can't maintain that. We just can't keep going in that direction because our general fund isn't going to be able to sustain it. So back then, I knew we had to make a course correction. So over two years, and the elimination of eight positions and some of the restructuring that we had to do within the departments, we were able to get down that draw for the 24 budget of just about $1,700. Home run. I was very proud and happy about that, but then ongoing cost, inflation, COLAs, health insurance premiums started to kick that back up again. So last year, the current budget that we're in right now, we had to take 610,000 from the general fund to make everything whole, to balance that budget. So tonight, when we talk about, well, what's the 26 budget look like with everything that I've just told you up to this point, we're going to be taking 1.5 million from the general fund. And then when I look at that, where are we at between that 17 and 25% in the general fund? That's going to put us right at about 20%. So can we afford to do it? Yes. However, the drawback is we're going to take that and decrease that general fund back down to 20%. So my point in telling you all this is, again, I'm looking at a course correction for 2026 into 2027. So while I'm very confident we can afford the budget draw for this 26 budget, I am not at all confident that we can keep up that momentum moving into 2027. Something's going to have to change. So what are the factors that influence the budget? Besides the things I already said, and then to reiterate what I said about that chart, is the decrease in staffing and the operational overhead in 2022 and 23, and remember, that's where we started to creep up a little bit, placed us in a better fiscal position moving into 2023 and 24. And at the end of 24, and what the auditor said, hey, you guys are, you know, you're floating around 30%, so you can definitely afford it. When I worked with Stacy, my lead accountant, we both figured out, well, that doesn't match what we have. Why is the auditor saying we haven't made what we thought we had? And it was because they are considering, the auditors are considering all those restricted accounts, those fund elevens, all those carryover accounts. They consider that if in an emergency, we can pull that money back into the general fund. So that's why they put us above that. But I don't want to do that. I want to keep those general, I wanted to keep those restricted funds in there because that's part of our fiscal plan moving forward, that we can pay for the, some of these capital projects that we have on the horizon by putting money into those rollover accounts. That was something that we hadn't been doing enough of as we moved forward, and it was pointed out in committee. Out-of-home placement costs are skyrocketing. The trend is going way up. Mandy could validate that. I don't even know what, what is the, Mandy, what is the most expensive placement cost we have for one month of placement?
Probably about $33,000 for one person for one month.
$33,000 for one person for one month. And those costs have been creeping up every single year for probably a decade. So unless the state steps in and does some sort of cost control, places some cost controls on these private entities, or they subsidize these placement costs, honestly, we don't know what we're going to do about these out-of-home placement costs. They just keep going up and up and up. When I worked in Langley County, it was the same exact problem. We had it even worse, and that was five, six years ago. We were about 1.5 million over back then. I don't know where they're at now. But I can tell you, it's going to be a problem moving forward. So I do hope the state at some point steps in and does something. We also have dependence on variable sales tax revenue. It is trending up, but the state provides that to us. I don't forecast the sales tax revenue. It's been creeping up. People have been spending, but of course, it goes a lot with the economy. So we'll see where that goes. Potential fluctuations in investment income. We have approximately 10 CDs out there, five of which are wrapped up in our borrowing. I don't like to sit on borrowing that just sits there. If it's something that we borrow for, that's going to happen in year two or three, I'm going to put that money into CDs, or I'll tell Jody, please put that money into a CD because we don't need it right now. So let's earn some interest income on that. There are restrictions, of course. I can't just borrow, we can't borrow money and just sit on it forever. We do, there is a rule, it's kind of an obscure rule, it's called arbitrage, and we can't profit unnecessarily from just borrowing and sitting on a good rate for a CD. So we do have to spend that money too. So I like to keep at least five of those CDs just in ongoing interest-bearing accounts so we always have a source of income coming in from that. That's another source of revenue. But it does fluctuate. We are seeing variable property tax revenue. We've seen changes in the law regarding that with tax properties that we can take and then not take, and then how much money we have to hold and not hold. We've seen big changes in the state and federal aid revenue that we used to be able probably predict fairly accurately, but lately, the last couple of years, a lot of it tends to go with the political environment that we've seen the state and feds draw back some of that money. So again, I can't count on a trend analysis to give me a good number. There's a lot that goes into that. The new supplemental revenue, the new shared revenue, as I call it, we did have $3,000 of that new shared revenue in to this budget with a couple of thou, with at least 100,000 going into food management and a couple hundred thousand going in to offset salaries. Now that is restricted. We cannot use that money for anything we want. If we could, I probably would have directed it for out-of-home placement cost, but we can't do that, it's restricted. The state tells us what we can and cannot do with that money. We've seen increases in public charges, those fees that we charge, it is a significant part of revenue for us, and that's good, but I found out, some of, just this year, that we hadn't made adjustments in some of these fees that we were charging for services to the public for over a decade. We kept those fees very, very low. So again, we couldn't afford to sit on those fees, keeping them very low for much longer, so we did increase those. And part of the resolutions tonight, you're going to see some fee adjustments again coming before you. We are so, also are doing very well with our workers' comp insurance. That multiplier has dropped because we haven't seen a lot of injuries or workplace injuries that would attribute to an increase in that. So we're doing a good job with that. Department heads are getting the message, they're getting the word out to be safe. So we do have to plan for the future. While we are in a good financial shape going into 2016, we cannot sustain such large draws on the general fund, like I told you. We have an ongoing revenue problem, obviously. We provide high-quality services that require a high degree of resources, funding. Based on rising operational costs, we lack the revenue to maintain our current level of operations. That's where we saw the great big spike, so we got to do a course correction on that. Decisions need to be made regarding the delivery of services based on these available funds that we have now, and the proverbial, the pie is only so big comes to mind, and you hear it all the time, but it's true. We need to review and periodically potentially increase service fees at least every other year. I'd like the department heads to review them every year, bring them to their committee to discuss, but at least we got to adjust these fees seriously at least every other year. We need to continue, continue to invest, like I said, with those CDs. We continue to evaluate positions when the vacancies occur. Service demands may dictate staffing needs, but funding will need to be available to meet those needs. And this has been discussed quite a bit in the last couple of months at the county, county board level. We need to also recognize, reorganize departments to more effectively utilize our resources. And I'll single out Mandy, she's done an excellent job in the last few months restructuring some of her 26 budget to reflect, streamlining these processes. She's found a couple, actually a couple hundred thousand dollars by restructuring. And that's what we need to do with all of our departments. Look at how, how well we operate, how efficient we are, and where we can see greater efficiencies in those departments. So we've already started planning for the future. We've established some restricted accounts for future capital projects, like I mentioned. We've established a fleet management program to balance out the vehicle acquisition costs that we have to decrease that yo-yo effect of buying vehicles all the time. And we have invested in strategic plan to help us guide our future decision-making. And next month, the final plan will be rolled out. I'm told the glossy version with all the pictures. So looking forward to that. We need to continue to look for grants to offset capital needs, examine the best ways to allocate new supplemental revenue by offsetting our capital expenditures in existing budgets. We need to develop a two-year budget and a strategic fiscal plan to help guide decision-making. This is my goal for next year. Not only do I want to look at the 27 budget, but I wanted to look at the 28 budget as well. About mid-year, we're going to know kind of where we're going to be at with the 27 budget. And like I said, we're going to have to make some pretty hard decisions during the next year regarding that budget. But I also then, based on what we decide in 27, look at what 28 is going to look like and where we're going to be at. And we have to do that strategically. We have to really discuss that and where we want to be, because again, we can't sustain what we're, the path that we're on right now. A strategic fiscal plan is only going to supplement our strategic plan, and I've already got some material on that that I'm developing to roll out, but exec and finance is going to have to really work with me, all of you are going to have to work with me to really develop that fiscal plan. Strategic plan's great. That'll give us an organizational overview of where we want to go, our mission, our vision. But we got to really concentrate too, is one of those goals, is look at our finances and to figure out where we want to go with our finances. We need to then look at the best way to allocate the new supplemental revenue to offset those capital expenditures in the existing budgets. I mentioned that earlier, we can only use that for certain things. Departments include law enforcement, highway, what was the other one? EMS. It also includes fires, but we don't have a county fire service, but those are the four, the state says we can use it for, so we're restricted to that. So we also need, and I know this isn't going to necessarily be popular with everybody, but I'm not big on borrowing myself and my own finances, but we also have to look at, consider strategic borrowing. And to come up with a strategic borrowing plan that includes those capital costs that up to this point we've been putting into the department budgets. A good example would be Danny's budget with MIS. Now he's telling us because of licensing needs and software needs, in the next three to five years, he's going to need, and I'll just throw out a number, let's say it's $100,000. Well, then that, if we don't borrow for that, that's 100,000, it's going to have to be put in his budget and then taken from the general fund. So I'm saying strategically, we need to get everybody together, all the department heads figure out what those costs are going to be for capital needs in the next three or five years, and base that on a ranking of what we need to do with our borrowing and to be strategic about it, not just say, well, we can do this, why don't we do this? It's like, no, let's give this some thought and let's really think about this on where we want to go with that, with our borrowing. Because again, I know borrowing itself is not a popular idea. And when we do our comparison here at the end, and I'm almost through, folks, that when I, when you look at that, you'll see how much borrowing weighs on, the debt weighs on our budget. Okay, we also need to decrease our mid-cycle budget requests for additional staff and unplanned capital costs or capital needs that are not emergent. An emergent need would be the first week I started here years ago, when the pipe burst in the courthouse and flooded the records room. Well, yeah, we didn't budget for that. Are we just going to sit on that and let the swimming pool develop at the bottom of the courthouse? No, we had to actually act on it and allocate some fund to be able to fix that problem. But we've gotten into this habit, and I've seen it several times over several years of, once we've established a budget, that we go back and then add positions or add capital projects that were not budgeted for during that year, and then that throws off the budget. Now, I'm not saying don't think about it, don't discuss it, but we have to really police ourselves with this and really think, do we need it now or can this wait until the next budget cycle? So just keep that, keep that thought. And then a final note here on, and this is more of my own personal thing, and it actually goes to the core of what I'm trying to do with the fiscal strategic plan. And that if we can base that plan on this statement, that future planning, the goal of a successful government budget is to control spending, to maintain efficient and equitable delivery of services, and to ensure the provision of reasonable pay and benefits for staff. If we can check off those and put that into our plan and use that as a guide, that if we're deviating from that, for some reason, we go back to this and say, are we doing that? And then to hold ourselves to that. Now, in your budget packets, and for those of you that have looked at it ahead of time, you'll notice these are the same, the same type of graphs we use every year and we update them, of course. But you can see with tax levy usage by category, the biggies remain, and it's the same as every year, public safety. And the public safety, what I mean by that is EMS, law enforcement, and emergency management. 47% of the tax levy goes to fund those services. And then we look at human services at 18%, highway at 8%, and then general government is basically everything else, all the other departments in there, everything. We put zoning in there, register of deeds, all of that goes into that. This breaks it out a little further. This shows that the non-property tax expenditures or revenues, rather, again, come from the same type of sources where we're looking at state aid for intergovernment revenues. Again, the state and feds have been pulling that back, or they say, we're going to give it to you, and then it doesn't happen. So it's very volatile. So, but that's the breakout. And then public charges for service, those are the fees I talked about, what the public pays for things like the boat landing fees and other, other fees that we charge, register of deeds fees, zoning permitting, things like that. Okay, so let's get into more down to the nitty-gritty here with looking at department by department budgets. And I'll just come over here again. And when we look at these, you can see the 2025 budget is presented here for comparison. These are the 26 expenditures, revenues, and then the budget. And you can take the expenses less the revenues to come up with the actual budget numbers. And then in parentheses, you can see if it was a decrease in the budget or those without parentheses is an increase in the budget. Now, understand that, that some of this is skewed because some of these departments are very small. They only have two, maybe three people in them. So when you see a very high number in that percentage, you go, oh my gosh, what's going on? Well, it might just be that that person had a change in their status and now wants family insurance. So we have to add that into their budget, and then that can mean $20,000 right there. So when we look at here, increases and decreases, let's see, some of the ones that jump out, county board, they have a decrease in their budget, you all, of $52,000. So you might say pat yourself on the back, we did a great job, you had a decrease, but that's because we didn't have to pay for the strategic plan that we added in there for the current year. So we took that money back out. So you see, that's where that came from. So you see that difference? Another one here would be economic development, 59.769 decrease in their budget or 96% decrease in their budget. Why was that? We took a full-time position, we reduced it to part-time, and then the visitor bureau thankfully stepped up and subsidized, subsidized that position almost fully to the point where we're paying maybe $4,000 for that position, a part-time position. And Brett Claveter, he's been doing a great job with that. So you can see where some of these other departments lie. I'm not going to go through all of them. It's right there, it's in your budget packets. You can see some of the departments, like 111% from land information, again, a very small department of two, makes a big difference when you look at that because of the added health insurance that that individual took. And we also took a part-time position last year that we were sitting on, tried to fill it all year, didn't get anybody to fill it, a GIS position. It's a very specialized position, you need a lot of training for it. We wanted to do it, but part-time. We could not get anybody. We even tried to contract it out, we couldn't get anybody because they said, well, you're too small, we don't even want your business. So we ended up elevating that to a full-time position because Megan was drowning in that office just by herself, and we ended up funding it to a full-time position. But again, that's what skewed the number up that high. So another one here, the sheriff's budget increased 4.44%. We added $232,000, almost 233,000. We added $232,000, almost $233,000 to his budget. That was one of the ones we subsidized with a bit of the new shared revenue. But that also includes the four new positions that he was adding to allow for the separation of the jail and the dispatch. So, basically a nominal increase in that, in that area as well. And next to the last slide, okay, you stuck with me. So, it's kind of a captive audience, isn't it? So, now here, we're looking at the actual budget, what it's going to mean for you. For you all that own land, taxpayers, I can go right down to the bottom line because that's usually what everybody wants to see, is what is this budget going to have an impact on me? And how much am I going to have to pay in taxes? How much more am I going to have to pay in taxes? Well, even though we're taking about 1.5 away from the general fund to be able to balance this budget, you're only going to see a very, very small increase in the levy. So, for $100,000 of equal, or let's go with $1,000 of equalized value, your property taxes are going to go up 1.3 pennies, 1.3 pennies. So, on $100,000 equalized value, let's say you own a property, it's $100,000, you're going to be paying $5, or you're $1.33 more than you paid for 25. So, even though we're taking a big chunk out of the general fund, taxes are very low. And I'd like to keep them low, but I don't want to go below that levy. If we go below the levy, what concerns me is, let's say you decide to cut $200,000 tonight out of some budget. That's going to drop the levy, which is going to mean next year, I'm going to see less revenue coming in because there's not as much tax coming in, which is going to compound the problem of me being able to pay for all the goods and services that we provide to all the taxpayers. So, I'd like to keep it steady, static. So, consider that when you vote tonight for the budget, that we're okay for '26. We're okay, we can afford it. We'll still be within that range of 17 to 25%. However, we are going to have to look towards '27 seriously and to quite possibly make a course correction that I did several years ago. That doesn't necessarily mean we're going to eliminate eight or nine staff. It just means we got to look at services and how well we put those services out to the public. Do kind of what Manny did, evaluate your internal operations, restructure, maybe combine some departments. We're looking at that too, I know that's been discussed. Things that could see some kind of savings to us while we still can provide services. Now, with that, I'll open it up to any questions. We will be voting on this tonight by resolution. So, again, if there is an amendment tonight to this budget, all I ask, it's fine, make an amendment to the budget. If that passes, tell me how much you want cut and what departments you want it cut from. Because then I can work directly with that department head or department heads to sit down and figure out, "How is this going to affect your operation?" If positions are in question, how, what positions? What service impacts is it going to be? Because again, I think that's fair to ask me to work with them to make it happen. Okay, so again, questions?
Just reply to public comment?
I don't know.
Yes.
It all depends on what question.
Well, this is the time your public would comment.
Okay. I guess, first on my list is Alan. I'll give the mic to you.
That's right, I'll come to you, I'd rather speak to the people I want to speak to.
Very good.
Make it as quick as you can. I probably ain't going to need it, am I?
You're fine.
I'm a special head to be a minister, so excuse me if I get one away. I've heard a lot of explanation about balancing budgets, buying CDs, making sure that proper people are properly paid, all important things. What I'm here to talk to you of is your neighbors, people sitting right over there. All of us plan on retiring here someday if we don't die first. We're talking about food for the people that actually live here. We can cut corners in a lot of places. But we shouldn't cut food for our children, we shouldn't cut food for our elderly because we're going to beat them if we're not already done. I think it's important that we remember these things. And we're not voting on numbers. See those faces, those are faces of real people that are really going to be affected. There are people at home that won't come here, they're too embarrassed, they're too shy. They don't believe in public speaking, probably some of them right there. But they still came tonight to show you that they are people, not numbers, not decimal points, not dollar signs, not balanced budgets. People who depend on these things to live here. Thank you for your time, Jim.
I'm a senior from Marquette County. I live in Montello. And I enjoy the food program, the meals. And we have six sites in Marquette County. There are five of them represented here tonight. The reason we came is we heard that with the budget cuts, the meal sites were going to be closed. And we're more than a meal site. We go there to socialize, we go there to spend our days and make friends. Most of us are from out of town. When we work, we didn't live in Montello. And I would hate to see any one of us have to travel farther than we do. Let's say they close Pacquiao Key, they'd have to go to Oxford. Well, not, or Oxford would have to go to Pacquiao Key or Westfield. Do they have the gas? Do they have the vehicle? Do they have the transportation? I would hate to see any one of them get cut. So, we all enjoy the meals.
I'm sorry, I just ate the marines and I have to wear it for two hours and then take them out because my brain is being trained. It's hard to train in old rain, I have an old body, so I'm here. I want to speak on behalf of the nutrition system. Our nutrition programs that we have, because I think they're vital. In 2017, I moved to Montello from Oxford. I had been in Oxford and actually lived in Adams Colony, but they let me come to the Oxford meal site. And I learned a lot, I did cheer yoga with everybody, we had a good time. I learned that it was a good thing for me to have. And so, to me, it's a passion, it's more than just a meal site. It's getting to know people, being in community. And what I found, as I've been in the process here, I eventually became a driver for Meals on Wheels. And then I became the site manager for cooking as a temp, as a temp. I just go in and substitute, so I don't have a site that I work with. But I found out that every meal site is different. It's a whole world unto itself. They all play the same card games, but they've got different rules. They have, they have a sense of who they are. Some meal sites have to pray before they'll eat. Others have to have a joke. Others do different things, some do exercises before they eat. It's a world unto its own. And it's about building community and having a safe place to be when those meals are being held. And I think it's very, very important for us to continue to have that for everybody as arts. As we have people that get older and we can build up the programs, I want us to continue to see that. I was part of the program before COVID hit, and it was big. It was, it was fun, it was flourishing, we were having night meals once in a while, we were doing a lot of different things. And then COVID hit and we bottomed out. And back when we opened up again, we started building up. Now, we've been building up slowly. It takes a while to reestablish something that you've lost, you just can't expect it to be there. So, I, I phrase the fact that we are growing and getting bigger and enjoying different things at different sites. I wish it was 10 times more than it is because then we might not be looking at having cuts to the meal programs. And I'm concerned about that, especially when you said things have to change in 2027 and 2028. I almost felt like, "Uh-oh, we get cut this year. Next year, we may be out the door." Because we're looking, I saw your graph and how it went so high and then it dropped down. And I'm thinking, "Oh, you're going to have drops like that next year? Uh-oh, look out, meal sites, we're going to have a problem." So, I want to stress the fact that, I celebrate the fact that we do so much in Marquette County, not only at a meal site, but we have a wonderful out-of-house, the, give me the name for it, I can't think of it. It's the out-of-home placement object that we have. When people can't stay in their home and be safe, or a child can't be safe, we get them to a safe place. We have that. It's expensive. The state mandates it, that we have to do it. I wish the state would give us more money and fund it a lot more than they do. I don't know how to have that happen, maybe you have to get to go to Madison and make a little bit of money, I don't know. The other thing that I really celebrate is that we have transportation. If you need to go to a doctor, you can call the ADRC and you can get a ride anywhere in the county. You can go all the way to Madison. And the prices compared to renting or getting somebody else to, you know, a company to take you there are economical. They are wonderful to be able to have that. But our meal sites are kind of like the frosting on the cake. They don't feel like they're eating extremely even. You just have to, whoops, I'm having it after you. The fact that these are people, they're coming together to have community, to be in a safe place and to have food. Some of them only get one meal, the site's only open one day a week. Others get two, others get three. And many of them don't qualify for the Meals on Wheels. So, don't think that if you cut something in the meal site, that they can automatically go to Meals on Wheels because there's a different standard there. And they may not qualify, so they may be out. So, just to be aware, there's so many different dynamics that are going into this budget cut that we're looking at for the nutrition program. And I didn't, I couldn't figure out your budget, I'm sorry. I was looking at the numbers and I got lost. I'm a bookkeeper, but I just couldn't do it, and I apologize for that. And I didn't, you know, call anybody, and I should have. But I just want to thank you for what you've done for us in the past. But I also want us to consider the fact that we are not expendable. The meal sites are not expendable. They are important and vital. We can't compare the cost of them to the value that comes to individual lives. It keeps people out of depressions, keeps them fed, and keeps them in a sense of community. So, that's where I want you to look at, possibly contributing some of that cut around for the meal site so we can continue to grow.
Marilyn?
Mark. Mark's the last one on my list.
I was signed up.
All right.
I'm signed up.
You guys shared a line, I apologize. Sorry, Mark, you're on deck.
They signed on the same line.
Yeah, I do.
And Pat, you're next.
Okay.
All right.
I'm coming. Slow but sure.
That's all right.
Okay, first of all, after hearing all of that, I just want to say, I wouldn't mind your job and thank you for your dedication for us. So, I'm just going to start out more on my own personal perspective. And I feel that I'm well-vested in Marquette County. I'm a fourth generation from Irish settlers that settled in Marquette County. And I'm speaking about my concerns regarding the ADRC meal sites. ADRC meal sites are meal, meal sites are an integral part of my life, giving me nutritional meals with social intervention and stimuli that affects all aspects of my well-being. Sorry, I have to read big print. I live alone, I'm on a single income. I cannot afford, with the current, you know, considerations about money, I cannot provide for myself the quality and quantity and value of food nutrition that the ADRC provides. I enjoy and look forward to being with my friends after meals. Now, I need to tell you, ADRC is really the jewel in Marquette County's crown. And it has many facets. We not only have the meals, we have speakers, we have in-service, we have workshops, and lots of interaction, which is very important for our overall well health. And Marquette County has long been known for caring about its seniors. We are valued commodity, if only to ourselves. We are not a building, we're not a road, but we do matter. And consolidating is really a form of cancellation. For those that go to those sites, they may not have the ability to drive 30 miles to get to another site. So, I ask when you vote, you think of us. You know, please preserve our senior sites for us. Let's keep Marquette County in the top in this endeavor. And I like eating with my friends. Thank you for listening to me.
Things happen before Diane.
Okay. Yes.
That's Diane, that's Diane.
All right.
Hi, my name is Diane LaFave. I'm a senior here in Marquette County, and I work for Marquette County. I work at the meal site in Montello. And we serve, you know, some of our seniors, we serve that are 60 years old, up to 120, up to 102 years old. And that is Burna Crass.
She's going to be 103.
Going to be 103.
This month.
Yep, this month. And, and we also serve a lot of veterans, and they come to our meal sites. And, you know, one of the questions that I ask is, "How much are you actually saving by cutting the meals and the sites and the food that the seniors of Marquette County count on?" You know, we have these meals, they depend on them for our nutrition. They come for social outlets and for fun. They play cards, they come for physical activities, exercise. And is this the kind of policy that Marquette County really wants to be known for? Cutting the meals and these activities for our seniors? I'll leave that up to you. You know, and I hope that you will vote And I hope that you will vote to keep the meals for the seniors for Marquette County. And all those who are here to support our program, I'd like to ask you to please stand up. You know, these are the people that are supporting our program. And we have so many more that don't drive after, you know, um, five o'clock when it's dark. You know, so these, you know, these are the daytime programs that we have. And, and there's no other place for the people to go. You know, if, if the meals get cut, we have no other place to go that we can have a meal, a nutritious meal for a donation of $4. Even if you were to raise it, you know, up to $5, we can't go. Can't go to McDonald's. We can't go to, you know, Quick Trip for a nutritious meal for that kind of price. And we have, we also have programs on memory care. We have programs for dementia. We have programs for falls. And we have programs for exercise and so many, much more. And so, you know, we have a lot of participation. And I ask you to, when you vote, to please vote to keep our meal sites open and to care for the seniors. Thank you. We come with all shapes and sizes, don't we?
Good evening. I'm Mark Emon. I'm a retired veteran in Marquette County. Do to others as you would have them do to you. Jesus said this. The first verse, this verse encourages, put yourself in someone else's shoes to understand their needs and feelings. A nation is judged by how well it treats its veterans. George Washington. This enduring quote emphasized that the moral compass of a country is reflected in its care for those who have served. To care for him who shall have borne the battle for his widow and his orphan, Abraham Lincoln. This highlights veterans' care as a serious national duty and as a guiding principle for the Department of Veterans Affairs. As we express our gratitude, we must never forget that the highest appreciation is not to utter words, but to live by them. John F. Kennedy. This sentiment suggests that the actions such as providing quality care for veterans speaks louder than patriotic words. Three years ago, the board approved having two full-time positions in the Veteran's Service Office. Since that time, Chris Berg and his assistant Brandon have made significant impact on the five-month backlog of VA claims that existed before he started reducing it to two to three months now. There are approximately 1,500 veterans in Marquette County. Since the assistant was hired, there's been an increase of 111 veterans in our county. And they have worked on 111 veteran or veteran-related cases and closed seven or more cases per month. They now handle 60 more cases per year than they did in 2022 before the position came, became full-time. Chris Berg and his assistant have, having done, Chris Berg and his assistant have done nothing but positive things for veterans in this community. Veterans in this county left to serve in the military and then returned now with health and other issues. They need help to resolve or make the issues more manageable, like the people from the two full-time people that currently serve here. People I've known and respected since moving to this county 25 years ago. People like Char Hall, Randy Polk, Bill Wade, Jamie Salzwato, Gerard Sawyer. They're not just numbers, but real people, veterans that received the help they needed from Chris and Brandon. Chris specifically helped me with a Korean War veteran's wife who was dealing with the grief of her husband dying. Chris prepared the necessary forms to get a veteran's plaque put on his grave. He marked where she needed to sign and I took the forms to her for signature and then got back to Chris to, to have them processed. And when the people responsible for making the plaque for the grave incorrectly engraved it, I explained what happened to Chris. He went through the process again to get it corrected. Thanks to Chris, he had made for one last challenge a veteran's wife had to deal with. Chris is presently helping my wife and I navigate and process the forms to apply for TRICARE healthcare, which can be very difficult. These are just a few examples I have, but I know there are many others with the additional 111 veterans in our county. As a retired veteran serving in the Marine Corps active duty, Indiana Army Guard and Indiana National Guard for a total of 38 years, I'm thankful that the Executive and Finance Committee voted four to two to keep the two full-time positions. As quoted above, Jesus said it best, treat others the way you would want to be treated. George Washington, Abraham Lincoln, and John F. Kennedy, three intelligent, highly respected presidents have all said similar things in a different way. All veterans, including me, in Marquette County hope that this board will also see the value of the two full-time positions in the Veteran's Service Office and vote a positive result. Thank you.
You have.
I realize I had to put them over the left, but if that's it, is there any comments from the board?
They are coming.
Close the public hearing? I don't think we need a short recess. Does anyone need a short recess?
Sure.
We're going to bring in business. Item nine is reviewing for the minutes. October.
Close.
I think they're just, we're going to go back to the business meeting, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And then, um, Mr. Chair, Abby Supervisor Swan signed on at 7:25.
Can you hear us, Abby?
Yes, I can.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry I'm late. Had a little problem at the farm.
We're going to go back to regular business meeting. Abby, that's a yes or no?
A yes or no for what?
To go back to the regular business meeting.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
That passes unanimously. All right. Now we're to the minutes. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. October 21st. Any other discussion? Call the vote. Abby, is it yes? That passed unanimously. Now, do we have any, I guess we heard all the citizens inquiries, concerns, introductions or anything? No. Okay. And we'll go to item one. Standing committee reports. Dennis, your first. By away?
Nothing to report.
Second finance and parks, uh, speak for themselves. Budget hearing, that's what we're working on tonight. Property committee.
I'm going to speak here myself, Mr. Chair.
Judicial and public safety, planning and zoning.
Judicial and public safety, the main items, we had six new hires now for EMS. They took delivery of a new ambulance and now we have ventilators in service in all of our ambulances. And also the jail dispatch, um, construction, the separation is taking place. And planning and zoning, the items are on the agenda this evening. And also the ordinance rewrite is going to be, um, it's been passed, of course, by last month's meeting. It'll become effective tomorrow. And the next big, um, plan that will be taking place with zoning is the comprehensive.
Human services. Board of Health.
Uh, Board of Health did not meet.
Other reports, any members in the board? I am 12, consent agenda. Kylie?
All right. The motion provided no member chooses to pull individual matters described off the consent agenda would be move to approve resolutions 57, 2025 through 60, 2025. Resolution 57, 2025, if adopted, the Market County Board of Supervisors approves four acres owned by David Jansen in section eight town of McCann would be rezoned to Ag 34 zoning district. Resolution 58, 2025, if adopted, the Market County Board of Supervisors approves a 39.49 acre parcel owned by Thomas Harvey will be rezoned to reassign approximately 4.05 acres to Ag 34 and approximately 35.44 acres to FPO, all in section 29 town of Mountville. Resolution 59, 2025, if adopted, the Market County Board of Supervisors approves the appreciation and expression of best wishes to Christopher Burke for his 10-plus years of service. And resolution 60, 2025, if adopted, the Market County Board of Supervisors approves the Operation Green Light for Veterans 2025 proclamation, recognizing the importance of honoring veterans by displaying a green light in the exterior of the courthouse and war memorial, November 4th through 11th.
I'd like to pull off resolution 60, 2024 for separate discussion. 2025, sorry.
Pull resolution 60, 2025 off?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it says no member, so she, I think she can. So I will edit that.
All right. So the consent agenda will be, uh, 57. Any other discussion on that? All the vote. Abby? Yes. That passes unanimously. Move to resolution 6. I leave on Mark's.
Okay. Let me add this into the system.
Okay.
Okay. Resolution 60, 2025. If adopted, the Market County Board of Supervisors approves the Operation Green Light for Veterans 2025 proclamation, recognizing the importance of honoring veterans by displaying a green light in the exterior of the courthouse and war memorial, November 4th through the 11th. I did on my end. It looks like we have a motion by Mr. Benson and a second by Mrs. Walters.
All right. Is there any discussion on this one? Abby?
So the way that I read that, it specified that it was for the year 2025. And that's already passed. This is already November 12th. And I think we should change it to say annually. Do I need to make a motion for that?
Make a, a motion to amend?
So I make a motion to amend it from specifying 2025 to saying annually.
You need a second to that. I'll second.
Any other discussion on the matter? Could you hear me? I've been handed the mic. I was told I'm not loud enough. That's better?
Yes.
All right. Go ahead, Julie.
From the home committee on this one, um, is there any objection or any issues to that?
I've got no objection to it. Madam Vice Chair, uh, it was a special, a special thing that was completed and presented to us by Paul Van Trigg to go ahead and honor veterans. Yes, it was not, uh, due, due to the constraints of the meeting and the timeframe of the meeting, we did not go ahead and vote on it until probably a week and a half before Veterans Day. Lance, would you have anything?
No, that is correct.
So this could be an annual thing.
It could, it can be an annual thing. I don't know. That would be more up to Paul than us. Paul?
So this is from the National County Association, Wisconsin County Association. This is done every year up until Veterans Day. So, yeah, you can make this an annual thing. It's Operation Green Light. It's just something to be national.
Kathleen?
Did we really even need this as, as a resolution? Did you do it last year, Paul?
No, we've done it this year. So I, when I heard about this at a meeting, I contacted Chris. We put the resolution together and then we got it to work. I got it to my committee to get it to go. I put the green lights out on the courthouse lawn and the more, Veterans Memorial thinking this was a non-issue. So, and by doing the resolution, you're just making it official.
Okay. I just do think, think the media has a resolution.
All right. Any other discussion? Call the vote, Kylie.
Could we do voice vote for the amendment and then I can add in just a regular roll call?
Okay.
Just see if the amendment passes.
Call the roll then, Kylie.
Or no, a voice vote for the amendment.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Does that work for you, Kylie?
And then, um, I'll see if the computer will agree with this. Yes. So now I've added in your systems, I made a note that it's been amended to add the word annually. So this is what you'll, you'd be voting on right now.
And I have a motion. The second, is there any other discussion? Call the vote. Abby, is it a yes? Passes unanimously. Item 13, resolution 61. Madam Clerk?
Resolution 61, 2025, if adopted, the Market County Board of Supervisors authorized the amendment to chapter 99 P of Market County ordinances with the amendments being made to the following departments and offices. EMS, Sheriff's Office, Land Information Office, and the Register of D. With the amendments to take effect, January 1st of 2026.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this matter? Call the vote. Abby, is it yes? Passes unanimously. Resolution 62.
Resolution 62, 2025. If adopted, the Market County Board of Supervisors approves the county board meeting attendance per diem to be set at $75 and members of committees, board, and commissions meetings attendance per diem to be set at $50, as well as the county board chairperson's annual salary to be set at $4,000 and the county board vice chairperson annual salary to be set at $1,000. This is to be reviewed and acted upon prior to October 1st of odd-numbered years and will take effect the third Tuesday of April of 2026.
And then most of the second, and Mr. Raddick, your first to speak.
Well, I would like to know why this amendment's even still on the agenda since it failed in executive finance. Item 13 on your executive finance minutes. So about the last line, it says moved by Dennis Sinner, second by Kathy McGwin to leave the salaries and the per diems as is. Roll call vote requested. Motion carried. Four to three. Why is it even on this? Why is it even here? Because it failed in executive finance. Should not be here. I suggest it's tabled.
I agree with that.
Indefinitely.
Well, everybody's looking at me, but this was brought forward through a third-party resolution, as you'll see in your packet. So I do have the, that included. And then also corp counsel can speak to it. I guess we didn't even need to do it by third-party resolution. However, I just thought that that was appropriate and respectful, being that it had already been submitted to me that way anyways.
I'm going to speak and before the corp counsel addresses, I have a couple more questions to piggyback off Mike. Might be easier if you let me speak before corp counsel addresses.
Go ahead.
That be okay?
I have a booster button ready. You have four.
I'm with Mike. I don't understand why this, um, resolution is appearing before this board. This, this third-party resolution was not discussed or brought forth through a standing committee as the county board rules indicate. The motion or the resolution that should be appearing on this county board agenda is the motion that was passed at executive finance. If the members of this board want to amend that resolution, there are ways through Robert's Rules of Orders to make that happen. But this, this never should have come, in my opinion, to this board as a third-party resolution. Those of us on executive finance that voted in favor of this motion were blindsided when we got our agendas to see this third-party resolution come forth that we had no idea was coming. It was not discussed. It was not vetted. I'm, I'm really upset that this, this was not followed properly. At executive finance, we were told that we had the legal right to discuss the salaries of the board and we did so. The rules committee has not put forth any recommendations so far to this board for adoption. The Rules Committee has not put forth any recommendations so far to this board for adoption. So I don't understand how this third party resolution can come through when it didn't come through a standing committee and an ad hoc committee is not a standing committee. Thank you. No, let's take the questions.
Yeah, I'll share next.
Uh, this, this was discussed at executive finance and lost four to three. According to the county board rules, there was the option for five members to sign on to a resolution to bring this forward to the county board. That is in the county board rules which we're governed by, uh, right now. The underlying effect of this is not how it came forward or under. The underlying effect is, and there have been some of us that stated this before, that when we're looking at cuts and looking at budget, I think the county board needs stuff forward too and take their fair shake on it. When we looked at stuff, this compares favorable to other counties, what they do for their member. It was stated then of changing it, and Mary brought this forward, from seventy five to fifty versus committees for seventy five and board for fifty. Committees, if you look, now that we have an administrative coordinator, involve a lot of just reports. There's not a lot of decisions that are made in committees now because of type of government we run under. And this is a budget thing, we ask everybody else to make cuts, so it's time for us to make cuts too. If the money is the big issue, then who's ever sitting here for the money and voting against this motion is sitting here for the wrong reason. We're sitting here because we want to do better for Marquette County. If you're looking at your money, then I'm sorry, that's just the way you feel. But I think this is a resolution where we're coming forward and we did it properly. Kathy McGrath circulated the resolution. There was no, at any time, open meetings thing violated. Everybody signed on their own accord, nobody was forced to sign it. It had six signers, which it only needed five. So I think this is a proper thing to do. When it involves fiscal, we can't address fiscal with county board rules, and this is a fiscal policy. As you understand, it was four to three. So let's bring it to the whole county board and let's see where this whole thing stands. If the whole county board feels fit, this is not pertaining to anybody that's on the county board now. This pertains to who's elected next year. And if you don't like what's stated in this resolution, then don't run for the board next year. That's the end of my comments.
Gary?
Well, I'd just like to, uh, disagree with the thought that other board members didn't have the right to bring this. I consider the full county board as the parent to all the committees, including executive and finance. And as the parent body, when there's that many board members that want this thing brought forward for consideration, denial of it, uh, coming forward is wrong.
Question more for corp counsel. How would a third, I mean, I think it's great that we have a third party that's interested in what we're doing and is presenting a motion to get to us. How else are they supposed to do it? I mean, isn't that the process that they, that they go through?
Yes, and my assumption is that a third party resolution was, was properly submitted. The, the, the most important thing and the reason why we have these, these notice requirements is so that the members of the public and the board are advised of what is going to come before the board. I agree with Mr. Sorenson's, uh, summary that the, the board is fully constituted, is absolutely the umbrella organization that is tasked with, uh, making final decisions on behalf of the county. And so accordingly, it could be entirely appropriate, even though something failed in executive finance, for that to be forwarded on to the full board for consideration because the full board might disagree with what executive finances, uh, recommendation was. So accordingly, so long as the, uh, resolution was properly noticed and everyone had a, a chance to read it and then to, uh, voice whatever their opinions are here, that's, that's the whole point. So.
All right, well, let's start with Mike.
Well, with that said, what is the point of having any ad hoc committees? Any other committees if everything's going to be decided here, as Gary said, this being the parent body? Then all arrested a committee, you want to save some money? Cancel them all. Want to save some money? Let's save some money. And like I said, at budget time, cut everybody ten percent. Everybody across the board, you wouldn't be borrowing so much money or taking it out of the pocket there. And maybe if there was a X amount of dollars left over in the kitty, I know you can only have so much. The law says you got to give it back to the taxpayers. We could maybe do that once. So if you want to cut, let's cut. But having this on this budget or on this agenda tonight is wrong because it was shot down in a committee. And that's why you have the committees to keep the stuff away from here, when it didn't pass committee, it's not supposed to come here. Take it back to committee. But it shouldn't be on here tonight. And if you take it back to committee, I'm gonna again make a, a motion to cut everything in this county ten percent.
Gary? Okay, I did the fiscal analysis on what this thing would do if it were to be adopted. I took the month of May as a typical month, I didn't want a high month where there's a lot of extra meetings and I didn't want a low month where there's very few meetings, and so I was advised that May is sort of average. If this were to be passed, it would save the county in twenty twenty six because it wouldn't go into effect until the third week into April, when the start of the new term, in the neighborhood of fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. Give or take, little, but I'm, I'm using an average month. For a full year, twenty twenty seven, the savings would be just under twenty eight grand, twenty seven, eight plus, average. So yeah, twenty five to thirty, somewhere in that territory. We need some accounts in next year's budget with a minus in front of it to offset inflationary increases for those that are going to have to go up. We know that. Here's the example. And I can give you numbers on where we would stand with the seventy five and the fifty. For the board, there were forty counties that responded to a survey from Walkbid, that's the Wisconsin Association of County Personnel Directors. We, if we leave it at the seventy five for board meetings, there will be eight counties above us, twenty-three below us, and eight the same. Other counties either did not answer the survey or they're the big counties that have a flat salary for their board as opposed to per diems, okay? So that's why I'm only coming up with forty, that their circumstances look very similar to Marquette. And the range was anywhere from thirty to a hundred, one hundred and fifty dollars. Thirty on the low end, one fifty on the high end. With regard to the fifty dollars for committees, the range was thirty to a hundred in that group of counties. And there were forty-two that responded to the survey on that particular question. There would be eighteen above us, fourteen below us, and nine the same. So there were, there were board members floating ideas of going even lower on the fifty. This is somewhat of a compromise among that group. Thank you.
Well, you're ballpark.
Gary, you have the floor.
I want everyone in this room to specifically understand that I am not against this because of the per diems or the rate of pay. Nobody runs for these positions to get rich, we do it because we have a civic duty and we care about this county. When I first got elected to this board, the per diems were fifty dollars. I have, I don't care that the, that if this passes and the per diems decrease, that's not my question. What I'm upset about is the procedure of this third party resolution. What's to stop this from happening every time something happens at a committee that doesn't pass and there's a few members on the committee who are ticked off and decide to find somebody out there to bring a third party resolution? You're circumventing the power of the committee. To me, that you're slip, you're really sliding down a slippery slope. And when this happened, when this third party resolution came to pass, it would have been nice if somebody out there would have given a slight indication that please check your packet because the resolution is different from what was proposed and passed at executive finance. That's what I'm upset about. In the past, in all the fourteen years I've been on this board, every time a resolution or a motion that was passed at the committee level and that's the resolution that came before the board. If the board members at the full board wanted to change it, they amended the resolution. This is a specific change in procedure that has never happened before. And I think it's wrong, legal or not, Roberts of Rules or not, I think it's wrong. And the only reason I'm going to be voting no on this resolution is because of the way it was handled and the procedure that I do not agree with. It has nothing to do, Dennis, with the per diems and what I'm getting paid or anybody else will be getting paid after the election.
Dennis, you have the floor.
First of all, when this was discussed, we got to remember that no committees constitute majority of the county board. If this is such an issue, let the whole county board vote. That's what's up here tonight, let the whole county board vote. There's committees that only have three people on a committee and if they decided to bring a resolution forward with three people on a committee, they could bring any resolution forward, and then you're saying that there's nothing that prevents somebody from bringing stuff to it. This is in the rules and this is for when something is an issue. There were six signers. That was, five was all that was required. Everything was done straightforward. As far as putting the resolution out before, board members can't put it out because we would have just started walking quorum. If there was something that wanted to know or somebody wanted to know, they could have made a phone call and seen what was going to be up. This is coming up plenty soon in time for anybody to object to. And Mary, no, I am not going after you. I hate it that you came after me, but that's your decision, what you made. Let's let the whole county board decide and let's let this vote. This does not pertain to us, we all got to remember. This pertains to who is elected next April and we all seventeen could be gone. And on the way with this, the next time census comes up, I hope this county board is reduced. And there is a way to reduce it without this county board deciding to reduce it, and that's by getting signatures from the citizens to come with a referendum. And then we do not have to wait for a census to take place. This county board is too large, this county board costs too much money. End of story.
For future, before I go into your jury, the preacher reference, I asked the board to dress pink, not each other. Okay?
Excuse me, come.
First of all, some of us that were on the board a couple years ago, the corp counsel wasn't present at our county board meeting. And when we brought the county board rules, the changes before the entire board, there was the discussion to amend the county board rules to reduce the per diems. And you know, that depends with a majority vote. But then, uh, county board individual did bring up that that was a proper protocol, that that's a separate resolution, which is correct. And therefore, with no corp counsel present at that county board meeting, we didn't know what to do, so that passed by a majority vote to reduce the per diem. But we didn't, we didn't honor that because of what we felt was probably a technicality and we didn't have clarification on. So this time, the ad hoc committee, the county board rules committee made the recommendation to executive finance to have it as it reads in this resolution before us. And when it went to executive finance, executive finance said no. So it was, it did go through a committee and then executive finance voted it down. Just as all these other people are here, I think it's great that the public gets a voice, that it's not just seventeen people and that everyone should be able to have something to say. This affects any future members of the county board and we're making that decision for them. I think that everyone on the board, because it does have a fiscal impact, should have a voice in this. I agree with Gary, I agree with Dennis. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do you want to weigh in on this one before I go further?
I, I, obviously people feel passionately about this. Uh, I, I think that one, one thing to, to remember, that the county board serves as a check on all of the committees and it has to. You know, for the same reason you could say people could play, play games and make sure that, uh, things only go before the full board. An equal argument could be made that you, you, you could orchestrate, uh, you know, resolutions to die at committees and then the board would never hear it. Uh, and, and my sense is, and in reading, you know, your, your rules regarding resolutions, is that any board member alone, uh, or, or here, it sounds like there was a third party, uh, resolution made, but any board member would be, uh, able to, uh, bring forth a resolution for consideration by the, by the whole board. So again, I, I, I understand the frustration, I think committees are great and I've been practicing municipal law for, uh, going on sixteen years now. Uh, committees are great to study a problem quickly and efficient, efficiently and then make a, a, a full recommendation to the board. Uh, so, so again, in my view, it's, the, the answer is not, well, let's get rid of all our committees. I think committees still serve a valuable purpose. But ultimately, things like this, uh, especially when they're contentious or when you have a closely divided co, uh, committee, in my view, are properly before the full board, uh, for consideration.
Scott?
I just wanted to thank the public for coming tonight to see this. None of us want to cut food, we love our vets, nobody wants to, we're two million in debt or, you know, we're, we're looking at a two million dollar deficit. And first thing we want to do is cut our own wages. So, you know, we, we're just trying to, trying to make this work somehow and we appreciate, and we love you guys, we love the vets, the cops. We, we want it all, you know, and we just, we got to try to, and one, one guy suggested a ten percent across the board. That was kind of the consensus coming into this year, and then that got shut down. And so here we are, um, trying to figure it out. So thanks for coming, we really appreciate your input and it's really good to have someone here to see what, what we're up against. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad you listened to us.
Oh yeah, definitely.
I too want to thank everyone for being here. I think it is fantastic when we fill this room and we hear what people want because we're in these chairs trying to, trying to decide what we think you want. And we aren't always apples and apples there. So I encourage you to come to every meeting. I encourage you to come to every committee meeting. Do what you can, get involved. I am so happy that we have the possibility of a third party bringing a motion before us when we may do something that we think is right or we're in favor of and the public can say, I question you guys. And I think that is fantastic, I think that's the way government was meant to work. I applaud the fact that, that there was a third party willing to come out and say, I think you guys got this wrong, executive finance. That's what we're here for, we're the umbrella, as Gary has pointed out. Let's be the umbrella, let's vote on it and put it to rest.
I just forgot to mention, I did a little bit of the checking with the financial part of it and, um, in two thousand twenty four, these are true numbers, if we would have had this resolution in place, it would have been a savings of seventeen thousand fifty dollars. And currently, but this does not include the October meeting, so, so from October through the rest of the year, the savings so far is fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. So that does give you an idea that we're talking, um, seventeen, eighteen to twenty plus thousand dollars if this were to happen. That's how this would be saved.
That's not even one out of home placement. You need to cut someplace out.
Yeah. I would just like to speak in favor of this also. And I appreciate what corp counsel said that, um, I feel that there have been twice already that committees have made decisions within this budget and those were overturned by executive finance. and those were overturned by executive finance. And I'm wondering if there's too much power in executive finance that perhaps that was given more power before we had the county administrator. But the county administrator is at all the meetings. He gives us the budget impact, we talk about it in committees, we discuss it, we try to figure it out. And the executive finance doesn't always have all the information that's in the other committees that we meet on. And I appreciate the fact that we have an ability to bring an issue back to the full board when four people have voted to take a resolution off. That's it, thank you.
And the discussion? Are we agree with that, so nobody's confused on what you're voting on?
Yes, I will. Resolution sixty-two, twenty twenty-five. If adopted, the market county board of supervisors approves the county board meeting attendance per diem to be set at seventy-five dollars, and members of committees, boards, and other commissions and speaking attendants to be set at fifty dollars, as well as the county board chairperson's annual salary to be set at four thousand dollars, and the county board vice chairperson's annual salary to be set at one thousand dollars. This is to be reviewed and acted upon prior to actual reverse of odd number of years, and will take effect the third Tuesday of April, twenty twenty-six.
Call question.
I just, I just had one question. Can you tell us what the, to refresh my memory, what are, what does a president pay for those positions?
They're, all meetings are seventy-five.
Right.
So the committees will go down to fifty, and then the chairperson's salary is at five thousand. So it'll be going from five thousand to four thousand, and the vice chair is at four thousand. So that'd be going from four thousand to one thousand.
Thanks.
Could I request a roll call vote, please?
Yeah.
A call question, are you ready?
I'm ready. All right, I will start with Mr. Bornhux, since you requested.
Yes.
Center.
Yes.
Speaker is absent, Templey.
Yes.
Prousey.
Yes.
Prince. Yeah. Black.
Yes.
McWynn.
No.
Nickberg.
Yes.
Raddatz.
No.
Sorensen.
Yes.
Swan.
Yes.
Walters.
No.
Actburn.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Benson.
No.
Orzek.
No.
Motion carries eleven to five. Second, so now my program doesn't look like me that I didn't choose it for that vote.
Got a question. Like, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If it's a fiscal, if it affects the fiscal year of the budget, doesn't that have to have a two-thirds vote?
I have an attorney next to me.
It's not a budget amendment.
Say it again.
It's not a budget amendment, it would just be a majority vote, it's just a per diem.
I agree with that, yeah.
Okay.
All right, it says voting, so I don't, the program doesn't let me kick you out of voting. So for those of you who just voted on that, if you could just plug in whether or not you voted yes or no, the system won't allow me to bypass a motion, thank you. All right. Okay. Thank you. Resolution sixty-three, twenty twenty-five. If adopted, the market county board of supervisors approves chapter two, rules of the county board of the code of ordinances will be amended to reflect changes as recommended by the ad hoc county board rules committee. A summary report prepared by the county clerk along with the full ordinance as amended has been provided.
Motion to stop. Waiting for the screen to light up, okay? Chuck, you're first.
I don't know if we need an amendment to do this, but item four under judicial and public safety committee, I feel the wording is very ambiguous. It says the committee may inspect the county jail no less than once per year. So if the intent is that we can't do it less than once per year, why is it may inspect? I think those two words counteract each other. And I don't think the way it's written, I understand at all what the objective is for that rule.
Put page in white, are you on Chuck, so I can find the real?
I, I don't have mine pulled up, so I don't, but under judicial and public safety committee, it's item number four. And it's just that one sentence, which is all of that line.
So, Mr. Chair, in twenty twenty-three, it was changed actually to that language for whatever reason, but the, the board passed that, they actually changed it to read that. It changed shall to may regarding jail inspections, inspections, and then... Yeah, that actually changed in twenty twenty-three to, to read it that way. But if, if you want to amend that right now, we can change it.
I would like an amended, I would like may out, and I don't have any problem with shall, or will, or can. But to me, may and no less are contradictory terms.
What's second?
Maybe second in it. Thoughts, comments from the board?
Can you read it? How Chuck is requesting it to be written?
I would need Chuck to state his motion with the, how he would like it to be written.
I think may should be changed to shall, will, any of those, but for simplicity of the motion, let's say shall.
Which implies it's compulsory.
Correct. Where may applies that it's not, but no less is directive. So it's a conflict. And here's our chance to clean the language up.
What do you want it to read, Chuck?
Shall inspect the county jail no less than once per year.
So the committee shall inspect the county jail no less than once per year. That's what it agreed. So it's simply just changing may back to shall, so just reversing what we did two years ago.
Is there any other discussion on that amendment? Want me to roll call this, or you want?
I'm good with voice vote for, unless things get really tricky.
All right. At this point, we're voting to change may to shall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most? Most who carries. You didn't hit your button, but I'll call on you anyway, Kathleen.
Pardon me?
You didn't hit your button, but...
Oh, I didn't know we were doing both. All right, sorry.
I got an IT guy that can come and help you.
Well, now I've got the motion up, but I don't have...
That's all right. You can talk anyway, Kathleen, go ahead.
Can I talk about something other than that?
As long as it pertains to rules.
Yeah. I, I had other concerns about some of the rules, but for some reason, I can't get my iPad to, to, let me see the whole motion, or the whole, all of the different changes that were on there. And so I can't, I can't refer to, I can't refer to what I had a problem with. But one of them was the, was combining, combining some of those committees. I, I don't think it's a good idea to combine parks and UW. And there was one other one I didn't think it was a good...
You didn't combine those two, right?
Yeah, I can't get it to come up on mine.
Feel free.
Okay, thanks.
If you go to Kylie's email.
Highway and property is on there to combine too, and I don't believe that's a good idea either.
It was, and what was yours like, though?
Highway and property.
Yeah, I don't think those should be combined either. And I also don't think that the parks committee should be reduced because by the number that they said with, with the number on the committee, because we get a better representation of the entire county by having the number of, of citizens on there. And I think the whole county should be represented, we get better input.
What mind would I be proposing, Kathleen?
Well, I'm proposing to take out completely the, the point that combines the parks and UW, and take out...
That one was never...
Yes, it was.
No, it was... Land and water was the one.
Land and water and UW extension.
Oh, it was land and water?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'll forget that one. So parks is still standalone though, then? Okay, but I, but I do propose that the parks change that reduce the number of committee members be taken out, and leave the same number of committee members. And then I also propose to take out the combining property and, and what were they combining that with? Highway. Because that's just way too big of a committee. And I can't remember if there was one other one. There was something about the ad hoc committee. Oh. No, there was something about how, oh, the one that, what is the one that they were, oh, to take out the elections of those? Highway and what's...
Committee to appoint committees.
Yeah, I, yeah, I wanted to know why you would, what was the reasoning of that committee to change it from an election to an appointment? I want to know the reasoning behind.
If I may, my understanding of it was, it was the belief that when the last rules were done, that it was a requirement by state statute, and we found out that is not so.
Oh, okay.
So what we thought was required by state statute, that it had to be elected by the county board, we found out that it wasn't necessarily true.
Oh, okay. So there was no advantage of doing it one way or the other? It was just that since we don't have to, we shouldn't?
It was simplicity thing, I believe, in my opinion.
Okay, okay. I was wondering what the reasoning was. And then the other one that I had a problem with was limiting, I have real mixed feelings about limiting the terms that, that a board member can be on a particular committee, because there are certain board members that are much more knowledgeable about certain issues, and I think it's an advantage for us to keep those people on committees if they want to serve on them. And if, and if it's the wishes of the, of who's ever appointing them. So I didn't like, I wanted that one to come out too.
You don't have it in front of you, Kathleen.
Well, I don't, because I couldn't, now I have it in front of me on Chuck's, but it won't come up on mine.
She wants seven, eight, fourteen, fifteen, nineteen. So if you can picture, which one would you like, shall we start by?
I can't do them as a package?
Well, could we do, so I looked at what we did a couple of years ago, and we just went line by, like, a number by number, voice vote. And then it seemed like if there were issues, like when we get to the ones that Kathleen doesn't particularly agree with, that's one that we would see if her motion would have a second, and then we would do an actual roll call. And that seemed to be pretty effective two years ago, if everybody agrees with that process.
Go ahead, page one of thirty-two, am I on the right one before I start?
You have what page?
One of thirty-two. Under county board rules.
Well, I, I have a different attachment open, but I can come up.
No. I just want to make sure I'm not looking at the old ones.
Exhibit A, summary of...
This one, Ken.
Yeah, I would go with Kylie's exhibit.
Yes, Mike.
I'd like to make a motion that you either send this resolution back to committee and have them rewrite everything in committee, and then bring it to the full county board, or leave it the way it is until next year.
Dennis? The ad hoc committee is only set up to act every other year with, with elections. And we spent a lot of time, I was part of the ad hoc committee, we spent a lot of time of going through this and addressing some of the things. My feelings on this is, like Kylie said, if anybody's got any question or one line, bring up the lines, and let's do this tonight, let's get on with this. We go to December, we're going to have other stuff on the agenda in December. This is the time the county board rules are supposed to be addressed, and this was set up because it was every, every other year. And I think we'd just be proper to go with what the ad hoc committee said. And if anybody's got a problem, like I said, the ad hoc committee was only, I don't know, five members. So the whole county board could overrule, and if there's any specific thing, and going through line by line would just be effective, and then take a vote on everything you want to change, line by line, rather than throwing it back on ad hoc committee. Because the ad hoc committee didn't have no reports from anybody that said what they wanted to do or what they want to change, so we just acted on stuff. A lot of it is just clarification, and the committees, and in regards to Kathy about the five years, about the three term thing, that was discussed, and the intent was, say, for example, if somebody has worked at highways or worked with construction and stuff, intent was to keep that person there. This is just a guideline to go and try to get them. We're not looking to boot people if they have a solid expertise in any committee. That was never the intent there.
I think it read like this.
Well.
You find it very now.
If you're going to go through it line by line here, and you had, you'd made it in the ad hoc committee, again, talking about saving money, get rid of the ad hoc committee because it was useless, because you're doing it here. Then the whole thing should have been done here. Now I'm done.
I was hoping you'd do that.
For this one, the next one's coming.
I would, I recommend that we proceed as Madam Clerk suggested. That's, that's how I would do this corp counsel, just go line by line.
Okay. We are on appendix A, or exhibit A, line one. Is there any problems with line one?
I don't see it.
It's in your county board packet, towards the end.
So are you on the, click on agenda and resolutions, and then if you scroll to our resolution number, so scroll to resolution sixty-three, when you click into that, and then it's exhibit A.
But my, for some reason, my iPad isn't, no, don't touch it.
You need this from Kylie's.
Yeah, can you go touch that?
I don't know, we'll see. Will you let Danny touch it?
Look at what?
It won't, when I scroll...
Kylie's email from Friday as an attachment, exhibit A.
She has it included in the county board.
I know that, but I can't, when I scroll, it disappears off the screen. No, I'm on this now because I was trying to, I was on this.
Okay, take a five-minute break here if you want, while Danny tries to get Kathleen functional.
You know, when I scroll down.
It's, it's taking a while to load. Oh, God, you see me brewing on that, yeah, I watch.
You won't put it in search?
Yeah, right.
I don't ever want to hear, we've always done it in ways you can't.
By then they'll be brought out.
Agree, but if you're not working, you don't need all the damn money, you're trying to save some money.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll all be done right here tonight. Which it's gonna end up doing anyway. All live meeting, they're taking it on, everyone in the meeting.
The happens, the happens that guy right there.
Wasted money.
If you click on that, what happens, what you have, when you come in from scratch, it might show. Yes, and you're like, alright, we're gonna go, go to library.
We'll be flipping the door you want.
That was the date for it, yeah, but it's kind of, kind of laid out the same way as the other.
I wish we could play that speech that Andy Phillips gave. It's what he said, sometimes. On the other hand, if you don't agree with the change, be the problem. Because initially, they're the. They don't like it, shoot it down.
Okay, yep, and then you know how to go.
Thank you very much.
No, I can't give you a good answer, but it's not gonna be bad. Okay, well, I'll stretch my leg.
I avoided any strikes.
Take this away from me, Danny.
Yeah, you might actually pick this up though.
Forty-four. Can I give them a two minute warning? Yeah. Two minute warning, two minute warning. I got way too many people.
Twenty-two inch ten. Yeah, uh, right out in the field there, fifty yards from me, he was on two doughs getting ready to play with another guard. He never, he wasn't trying to dare. I fronted, I leaded.
Not supposed to shake or sew it with. Not sew it, it's a pocket thing. Sounds gotta keep me awake till two in the morning when we adjourn this. Marathon, I'll be done by then.
You know, Chuck, you know, you know the pop-up thing where you have.
But I'll be posting the after-party. It's four thirty in the, in New York City.
How long are we all gonna get there?
Right, well, I'll call Mike, I'll call Bitterman, have him come pick us up.
Are we gonna call?
Bitterman will take it. Okay. We have the safe ride program.
Well, that was a bad idea.
Wait till next month, we'll get a lunch. Want to take the next one, a bit longer? I don't believe it.
Alright, break is over. We will start with exhibit A, line one. Does anyone have concerns with line one?
Are you doing, are you working off of exhibit A?
Exhibit A.
Okay.
Yes, line one. I'm assuming we're all good with line one. Let's go to line two. Any concerns with line two?
Yeah, with the language. This just added WCA white language, what is it?
You have to look to, look at the marked changes. This is just a summary. I'll pull it up.
Thank you for your patience, Kylie.
The two-year period of time between the organizational meetings in section two point zero one A hereof shall constitute a session of the county board. And any business pending in upon which the board has not acted prior to the close of a session can no longer be acted upon without being reintroduced.
Thank you.
Straight from the WCA.
We're all good with line two? So even the line three. It's self-explanatory. Line four. Line five.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The board vice chair, i- isn't that also that the board vice chair is also the chair of the health, health commission? No?
No, they were chair of zoning and public safety, that word is, word that's just shaped.
But not health, okay.
Not health, no.
Okay, thanks.
I got a problem with it. Oh, it says remove the line that there will be, so in other words, it's up for grabs finally for anybody. Very good.
Is that a move your problem?
That, that came my problem, yeah.
I'm on six.
Is it on one, five or six?
Six.
Six?
We're on six. I, I have something about six.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't think that it should be, I don't think that it should say that there's a minimum of two training sessions held annually. I think when we need training sessions or request training sessions, then we should have training sessions. But I don't think we should say we have to have two a year.
Uh, to the board.
I agree.
I disagree. I think anytime you can have training, it's a good thing.
I think, I think when the committee went ahead and went through that, a lot of this had to go ahead and do with, one, new county board members going ahead and coming on. And then two, uh, was, a lot of it had to go ahead and do with computers, upgrades of computers. And technical training to go ahead and be able to use the iPads. That was what the ideology was for the training.
Well, and I agree we should maybe have training for that. I just don't think we should say we have to have two training sessions a year. Because maybe there is a year where we don't need two training sessions. And if it's for a new, if it's for new board members, then say that it's for new, new board members in their first year or something.
I think it was the, we looked at the ad hoc committee, the discussion was to have even if we brought in Danny to show us how to do that, I think. Does everybody go outside with them, or? It would be as simple as that, and that's why the rule was in there, because there would be something that this county should be, board should be informed of at least twice a year, about more. That was why it was put in there.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, I'm not against the training. I just don't think we should say we gotta have two sessions every, every year.
I think there was also a recommendation made by WCA too, that, that the board go ahead and have some mandatory training sessions, so.
Yeah, it doesn't say that it's mandatory, you know, the ad hoc committee thought that this would be a good idea. And I think that if you've looked at any of the draft of our strategic plan, I think that um, you know, bringing the group together, having some type of um, training. We're at all different um, levels of, of experience on the board. And I think that everybody is a, is an equal, and I think it's just a way to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page.
Well, it does say it's mandatory. It says there's gonna be a minimum of two training sessions a year.
That's, does not say mandatory.
Well, it says they're gonna have a minimum of two.
So you have to be there, but I see, I don't have to go.
Oh, you don't have to go? Okay.
You're gonna do nothing but die and be taxed.
There's, it's, it's words, they're milk. Not may, will. Will, shall, can, as in the other amendment that Chuck made.
Well, I think it's a attempt of the board to educate the board. You know, it is the long and the short of it, and if you don't think you need educated, don't show up, you'll have to train, go.
That's what I was gonna say. It, it does say traditional start time of seven, that these would be earlier, so if a board member just, if the topic is of no interest in the training, and that would be, I take it on an agenda, advising people what that training would be about, they need not come until the regular start of the meeting.
Bingo. What can we write with that? Kathleen, Mike?
I'm fine.
Well, you guys are ones of fun.
I went along with the thing and said two, but what if you have twenty-two, it doesn't matter to me. Don't have to come.
Line seven.
Should be manned three months a month.
What are we on, seven?
Seven. Gary?
I think line seven should be eliminated, cause I like the way you've been doing it all these years for those two committees.
Gary?
Yeah, um, that one I knew was going to be a little more potential for controversy. The thing is, this board never knew that the statute had changed. Maybe a few people did, but the full board did not know that the statute had changed. It now allows the committee on committees, basically, the ad hoc, uh, which is the board leadership plus a few, you'll come to that one down the list. It allows them to do the same thing to highway and ag and extension as the others. And that is this business about rotating somebody off. When it's elected, there's no guarantee there's gonna be a rotation. So that's one argument. The other is uh, the thing that Mr. Phillips said to us when he was present here a few months back. Don't be afraid of change. He, he said, you know, this argument that, well, it's always been done that way, it just isn't valid with him. That doesn't mean change is always good. You, you can go with tradition, you can go with whatever, but don't be afraid of the to- the possibility of change.
Yes, yeah, this allows what was discussed before. If you have a person that's expertise in either one of these committees, if they're not elected, then that person can't sit on the board. Say we were to have a county board. Highway commissioner, previous highway commissioner. And if he didn't get the popularity vote to get in the committee, he couldn't do, you know, he could go to the committees and offer, he'd go to the committee meetings and offer his uh, expertise. But when it came to voting or stuff, it wouldn't have this. So this alleviates and sets up for that change where, when the board is, when the ad hoc committee is appointing, when they're appointing, when we come to number eight, this gives it the leviation where it's not a popularity contest no more. It's looking and rotating. I think that's the whole point of the whole thing, looking and rotating and seeing if somebody is a fit on a certain committee, and this allows that to happen then. Uh, because we're not looking again at the county board chair and vice chair, we're looking at it at other members to this uh, committee that sits to committees. So then this would address some of that stuff. But it's not, this whole thing wasn't about kicking somebody off or stuff, it's just eliminated some of this popularity contest that happens with a couple committees when they're elected.
So we'll go with line seven. Leave it. Leave it as is?
I have a comment.
Gary?
Um, I'm just gonna play devil's advocate, with the line, line item seven. Elections are supposed to be a due process, our whole democracy is based on that, so I think election, electing a committee is just as valid as appointing one. I don't, I don't necessarily think that electing a highway committee or an ag and extension committee is based on popularity amongst board members.
I think it is.
I really don't.
I do. I've been on for ten years. I've been on for ten years, and I have tried to get on the highway committee every year. And it's popular vote, and it's a man's world, so you cannot get on. I have been voted down every time. And thank goodness, the women on here voted for me, and I'm on the highway committee this year.
I believe I nominated you.
So I believe you did. But it's, it's a popularity or a man or a woman's world, and that's the way it's gonna be always, and that's the way it's gonna stay, because nobody's gonna change.
I'm just saying I'm playing devil's advocate on that, and which ties in with line number eight. I'm not so sure that there should be an ad hoc committee appointed of three supervisors and the leadership of the board to be appointing committees. I have a problem with line number eight, and I think seven and eight kind of go together.
We're on the line seven and eight, just for the sake of conversation.
If you're reading them right, the ad hoc committee there, read the last sentence, these names are gonna be randomly drawn from a hat. So it wasn't gonna be somebody appointing these extra three supervisors, it's gonna be the chairperson, vice chairperson, and then three random supervisors. This way, you get a little different flavor into it, it's not looking, because otherwise, before it was the chairperson, vice chairperson, along with corp counsel, uh, now the corp counsel with the county administrator, looking at appointing these. And this is just bringing a few more people in uh, to do it, to just randomly draw. So, you know, and if you don't want to serve on it, you just don't say no, and then they just draw a number four person until they got three. I think we did a pretty good job on that one.
Chuck first.
I agree with everything Kathy said. I think being a, a new person to the board, I didn't know any of you. And at the first meeting, I was asked to select people for the highway committee. And I don't know any of you from Adam at that moment in time, and I agree totally, it was a popularity contest. I would go so far as to say, every committee member should be drawn out of the hat. We should have an equal number of assignments. What ought to happen is there's seventeen name, or set, one through seventeen go in, and okay, you're on this committee. Draw the five for that committee. And then when you hit seventeen, all the numbers go back in again, and we do the same thing. I think it's great to have new people looking at new things. And you may have an expertise in one area, but you can lend that expertise to something else. And I, I know for me as a new person, I've learned a hell of a lot by being on a committee. Not that I necessarily had anything going in, but as a result, that's how we're gonna develop as board members. And take the challenge you're given, which is, okay, this year you, you're selected for committee A. Okay, I got it.
Not a bad idea. Gary?
One other, oh, I guess I would use the word argument for number eight, is it would be transparent. If it's going to be a committee of the chair, the vice chair, and three other board members, that's going to be an open meeting. Okay, it's gonna be very transparent, as, in terms of having that one meeting to select who sits on various boards and committees. And I'm for that.
It was brought up at our ad hoc rules committee about just pretty much drawing the name on the head. I don't oppose that. This was, matter of fact, I'm not for committees, but I even suggested putting seven people on the committee, so there's more diversity of people selecting um, persons for each committee. Just because everybody, again, I'll say it again, everyone is equal. Just because, again, I'll say it again, everyone is equal. One of seventeen. And there should be equal representation on all of the committees. And I think it should be divided and shared, not the same people on the same committees every single year.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Abby.
I agree that it would be nice to not have a popularity contest, because I'm the only person that has on one committee, because nobody wanted me on other ones, because they thought I was gonna create a problem, but that's not what I do. So I agree that it'd be nice to have names drawn, instead of just picking who you think's gonna do well on a committee or not.
Peggy?
She is not the only one that's only on one committee. I also am only on one committee. I have to agree with what Kathy Jo said and what Chuck said. As a new person, when those elections were taking place, I saw the sideways glances and the, you're gonna vote for me, I'll vote for you. Oh, you're gonna vote for the other one? Okay, I'll nominate this one. I mean, I saw that all going on. And I know for a fact that I have been kept off some committees, just like Abby said. I know that for a fact. And so I think as random as it can be, and as unbiased as it can be, the better it is.
I think we ought to change it.
Oh, sorry.
With all the names in the hat for each committee and pick them, and then when you're only on so many committees, and that's it.
Lance is next, and then Kathleen.
Back to item seven. If it's not required by law to elect it, I don't care if we elected or appointed, but I think it should be the same process for all committees, unless dictated by statute, in my opinion. It's just fair and equal across the board, in my opinion. I think the drawing names from a hat and placing them on committees is a great theory. I don't think it's a great reality, because indicatively, you're gonna have people that don't want to be on certain committees for whatever reason. And if they don't want to be on there, and you force them on there, they're not gonna be a value, or they're not going to attend. And so I think there's some value in putting people where they want to be, because if they want to be there, they're gonna do a better job, in my opinion. So I think that's where the theory and the reality kind of could potentially conflict with each other. I agree that having people on boards for a long time have their benefits, but they also have their cons. So again, it's a slippery slope both directions. I see value in both. But I think the way we assign committees, however, if it's elected or appointed, should be the same across, unless dictated by a higher statute.
Kathleen?
Yeah, I'm really opposed to just picking names out of a hat, because I think the county loses. Because they lose a lot of talent and knowledge from people who would do really, really good on certain committees. And I want those kinds of people on those committees. I want people to have a chance to be on the committees. You know, I don't want, you know, it's the same people constantly, and nobody else gets a chance. I think we need to do something, and I think maybe the going to the ad hoc committee of assigning them is a good thing, because it's more people looking at it and more open. But I would be totally opposed to just picking names out of a hat.
It's your county board, and it's your county board rules. What do you want to do with seven and eight? Then motion of number seven and eight, it's good, it's good.
Seconded.
All right. Second, the further the motion was, as long as everybody agrees to leave seven and eight as printed. Are we gonna call the vote, or are we gonna just agree?
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
When you pick this ad hoc committee to pick the people that's gonna be on the ad hoc committee, that sit there and say, okay, I'm gonna take this guy, I'm gonna take this lady, or this, that, and the next thing. The ad hoc committee's gonna get their names put in a hat, right?
Yes.
Yes. They're the only ones.
Okay.
For this language, for the one meeting.
So we're good on seven and eight? Nine?
Determined for no.
That one's just a clerical thing? Does anybody have a problem with nine?
Nope.
Ten? Gary, non eleven? Well.
Explain eleven to me. Go back to that. Change thirty minutes to sixty minutes. So every meeting has to be at least sixty minutes.
No.
No.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Few months ago, we got the proposals for doing the separation, the office renovation. Property held a minute, thirty minutes prior, we held a meeting thirty minutes prior to the regularly scheduled county board meeting. And so by the current rules, we could have charged two per diems, because we had two meetings. So what this says is if you have a meeting within sixty minutes of the county board meeting, you won't be entitled to an additional per diem.
So does that mean?
I'm just explaining what this re.
My wife had meetings before this meeting, and you only got one per diem. You didn't get two.
But the rule said thirty minutes.
I'm just explaining.
We just changed the rule from thirty to sixty.
Well, then you owe people lots of money.
So like when executive finance, or when parks meets before executive finance went back to back, you wouldn't get, and you were on both committees, you wouldn't get both per diems then?
No, as long as it both end up.
Because parks is always an hour, and then executive finance, so parks wouldn't get paid.
This refers to only the county.
This is, the rule is specific to meetings before or after the county board.
Only county board. Oh, okay.
Sometimes you have an impromptu meeting that you schedule on county board night, just because we're already gonna be here.
I gotcha.
You will be entitled to an additional per diem.
Okay, sorry, I didn't realize it was only that meeting.
We clear on the sixty minutes, then. Okay. Item twelve. John?
Yeah, I don't think highway property and land and water are fine. Nothing against extension.
I can't hear you, John.
Ag and extension, land and water, and five being together, but not highway and property.
No. Highway needs to stay by itself.
Correct.
I don't care who's on it, but it needs to stay by itself.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Anyone else?
We need to motion to change that.
Yes, we do.
Mr. Chair, can we kind of just wait on twelve, but then maybe do a vote? Because number fourteen and fifteen, separate the two. And that way we can talk about land and water and UW extension as one package, and then property and highway as one.
Do we really come back twelve?
Well, I have a problem with thirteen. Because I think, as I've stated a couple times, I think if somebody has really good skills and adds a lot to that committee, they shouldn't be limited to three consecutive two-year terms.
I believe that's what they said. It was a suggestion on a hand meeting.
Right. Advisory, not mandatory.
It's not a cut and stone rule. It was just a suggestion.
Well, then you should remove your suggestion, or either make it a rule, because you're gonna have discontentment with that one. They're gonna say, well, Mary, I'm gonna pick on you now. She's been on health and human service for several years. She's good at it, but wait a minute, she's been there too long.
Yeah, it's not really a rule if you just suggest.
It's either, it's either yeah, you can, or no, you can't. Don't make it a gray area.
It's a suggestion to the committee on committees.
I feel that picking on you.
I don't think it should be in there. Whether it's a suggestion or not, I mean, you should make lots of suggestions in rules. That doesn't even make sense.
Do you think it should be in there?
Yes.
Is there a second? Any removing line thirteen?
Second.
Removing line thirteen.
All in favor, say aye.
My turn.
Oh, okay.
Don't be taking my thunder. Just took a cut, hey, Mike.
I'm stealing your thunder.
All in favor, removing line thirteen, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that was four.
What was, how many?
Four opposed, I believe. Each your hands.
Yeah, just show your hands with them.
Do they oppose?
Or what?
Opposed. Five. I was close.
She's so curious. So number thirteen. Oh, there's six.
Thirteen is struck.
Okay. It's still removed. All right, so number thirteen will be struck.
Thirteen.
I think I'm fine with that.
Is everybody else fine with fourteen? So that was one Kathleen possibly wanted to discuss, Kathleen fourteen.
No, she thought it was parks.
Okay.
I think, was that, was the concern right, Kathleen?
Yes.
Okay. Because technically, their meeting is one now. They just do it back to back.
Okay.
And fourteen. That was fourteen. Fifteen. This is where we combine highway and property. Gary?
I threw that one into the mix just for discussion. I don't have a strong opinion on it. But I, when I kind of look at the length of meetings, both Brian and Paul are known for very organized, well-run meetings in cooperation with their respective committee chairs. And I just thought, okay, if the move to the board is to save some money on per diem, there's a possible combination. It's not totally out there, because there are counties that do this. Because they're dealing with equipment and infrastructure, and buildings and grounds, and all the rest, and facilities. So it's been done in some counties. I could name one in particular, and that'd be Dane. But I don't have a strong advocacy of it. It's just a thought for saving some per diem.
My little concern is if we get new leadership that's not as organized, then you lose that. So you're gonna make this decision based on current staffing, and not the committees and their responsibilities in general. I applaud both supervisors, and I think they do a great job. But I don't agree with making rules based on current members, because any one of us could change tomorrow.
Yeah, my only concern with combining those two committees is that historically, the property committee has been the committee that's charged with long-term planning. And if that's gonna continue and not change, at some point, that committee may have a lot more on their plate. The board, you know, actually diminished the duties of the property committee by taking MIS away from property and some other things, and switching them to executive finance. So, and I didn't think that was right either, but I would agree, I don't necessarily think highway and property should be combined.
I don't either, because sooner or later down the line, somebody's gonna look at it and say, why are these committees combined? So we're gonna get rid of the commissioner, which is there by state, or are we gonna get rid of the property guy? Because why you got two heads, and we're only having one meeting for them? I think you're treading up the water the wrong way. And the highway department, the difference between the highway department and the property department, and I've been on both of them, is the difference between a Mercedes-Benz and a Greyhound bus. They're not even close.
I just think that those are two departments that have huge responsibilities. And I just think that they need to be addressed by one committee, because even though they're very organized and that, there are some huge things that come up in each of those committees and each of those departments. So I think they should be separate.
Anyone else? What's motion on the floor?
Motion to strike line fifteen.
Second.
You have a special motion to strike line fifteen. If we combine the highway on top of these committees. You have a special. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Three. Fifteen is struck. Who knows if we would combine with that law? By sixteen. Land and water and ag and extension. Well, that means we sort of took first down. It's already out of there by the roof of our last traffic. Land and water. Talking about what can I add and do this one, but the same thing, finding someone. No, that one's gonna be struck too, because it's property as long as long. Are you on claim sixteen now?
I can follow it.
Or put Florida on the spot.
Well, this is simply, these are just more or less cleanup from the fact that those two committees will no longer potentially be combined. We know they won't. So property will go back as is, and then I'll change highway verbiage back. To me, that's just cleanup. The same goes for number twelve. It's just I'll have to go throughout and just change each time I did that. But yeah, property committee is gonna have to be added right back in. For, is that referring to exec and finance? I'd have to pull it up.
Seventeen has exec and finance.
Yeah, but is two oh nine C, yes, two oh nine C is referring to exec and finance. It just means that whoever chairs property committee will also be a member of executive and finance, because property will not be combined. And then with seventeen, I'm assuming then tax deprocess stays with property, so that would also.
Yes.
Yep.
We don't have to go back to twelve, because we already cleaned that up.
Yeah.
Cleaned up seventeen, so there, there's eighteen. Gary?
I'm just curious, as, I'm not sure necessarily that tourism, a social media coordinator, needs to be under exec and finance committee. My thoughts are that they might better align with property. I know parks and real planning pairs with property at times regarding parks and all of that. I guess I'm just thinking that tourism and social media coordinator, the oversight committee, would be better served by property.
You have no idea why you want to put my executive finance.
I can answer. The exec, it's under there because I'm under there, and this position is under me, my supervision. Mostly it's because of that grant. And also that the visitor bureau put me on their committee as their advisor. So it seemed to me that since I report to exec and finance, to keep his position under me. And then I sign off on all his time cards.
It can still be under you, just assigned to a different committee, because you attend all those committees.
True, but if you're putting it under, let's say, Paul.
I'm not necessarily saying that. I'm just saying the oversight committee should be property, not Paul. You can still be the oversight, you can still be his supervisor, but it would be reported to the property committee.
It's not an infrastructure issue, Mary. It would be anything. It'd be more of an economic development issue.
Right, exactly.
It's not an infrastructure.
It would be much more, if it wasn't gonna be under exec finance, it would be much more appropriate to put it under economic development. But I think because it has that financial impact that we're hoping that it does, I think it fits under executive finance.
I'm just trying to, you know, kind of how line is the way it is.
The cost on that? Nineteen.
Yeah, I have a problem with that. Yeah, I just think that, as I said, reducing the number of committee members tightens up like how much input that committee would get from other places around the county. Like, we have somebody, a citizen from Westfield right now, and we have a citizen from the Briggsville area right now. It's really beneficial to have people, you know, spread out enough people so that you get the input.
Somebody's under no count.
Pardon me?
Three?
Three citizens on the door.
Yeah, and then the, the citizen, and then there's a business citizen on there, you know, that's, that's in the, a, a business that gets affected by.
There's three citizen members on there right now, and there's three county board.
Yeah.
It's a six-person committee. So what's your wishes?
I, I would make a motion that we, um, get rid of that one.
So we have to leave the verbiage as it was then? But we can't just get rid of it, we have to know how many people are on the committee, but it stays status quo.
Would stay status quo, so we would strike that, and just stay the way it is, that's what I'm proposing.
Anyone else? I'm gonna call the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? You know, motion is to, uh, leave parks and real planning committee as it is now. On favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
I think it was repeated, I think you want an actual number?
Um, good up to the board.
An actual number, okay, all, that one to leave it as the three grand. I'm gonna say Abby, don't tell her.
I said yes.
I, I know, but I was counting my hands in the room, Abby, I'm sorry, so it's eight, right, we agree?
That's, that would be tied.
That's a tie.
Alright, I'll be welcome.
Alright, thanks.
Repeat the question?
Clarification on the motion, yes means we're gonna leave the committee assignments as is.
The committee for parks as they are right now, which I believe is three county board members and three citizen members.
But the motion is to strike this recommendation of number nineteen.
And to leave it status quo.
So it would be, yes, left as a, strike, so removing the suggestion at all. So would, everything would stay how it normally is.
So you're striking nineteen, that's the motion.
Yep.
Alright, um, Kathleen?
Um, yes.
Nick, uh, Nickberg?
No.
Braditz?
Yes.
Sorensen?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Actover?
No.
Bennett?
Yes.
Benson?
No.
Horzak?
No.
Hornhoff?
No.
Benner?
No.
Uh, Kemplee?
No.
Crowsey?
No.
Prince?
Yeah.
Black?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is the title.
I just want to be.
Yep.
No, see, are you line twenty? That one's new, that's, that's new. Twenty-one. This is with twenty-one? Twenty-two, Mike's gonna ask what don't we see the label for it? You're not allowed it, Mike.
Why are you allowed?
Personal devices.
With your cell phone.
iPhones laying on the desk right in front.
Ain't allowed here.
It's not used.
Well, would have agreed.
It's not so easy, right? Except in emergencies.
Lance, do we have the verbiage?
Yep.
The only reason I ask is I have multiple hats I wear, and there are times that I will have to excuse myself for personal reasons, as indicated by that personal device, so regardless of what this rule says, I have to wear multiple hats at all times.
It says, all county board members shall sign his mobile phones and all other personal electronic devices during a meeting of the county board, and of any committee on which the board member serves. Such devices may not be used during any such meeting except in the event of an emergency, or with permission of the chair. This from the WCA.
Yeah, this one was a WCA recommendation, because there was a county where the press was present at a county board meeting, observed two board members texting, and all of a sudden, there were open records requests for those board members' cell phones to see what they were texting about in the middle of a board meeting, so it was to put that to bed.
I have to use mine sometimes to adjust my hearing aids.
Well, I think that's outside of the realm of what this is intended for.
Well, it's talking about using my mobile device, though.
Mine does the same thing.
You wanna know from the chair, that's so you can adjust it.
I'm like with Lance, I, mine's on, the ringer is off right now, but the buzzer thing is on, because I got several things going on in my life, and there's times when I've had to get up out of a mo- meeting, because my phone went off, and that was more important than anything Market County ever has.
And I believe the point is, if the device goes off and you need to take it, the door is there, it's not part of this meeting. We don't need Peggy texting John in the middle of the meeting, because she needs one more bullet device of hers.
With that in mind, I'm fine with it then, the way it is.
After hearing the verbiage, I'm fine with it too.
And with that verbiage, then the, something that was removed, and I guess you can decide which one you prefer, was out of respect for the efficient conduct of business meetings, texting and the taking of cellphone calls shall be for emergency situations. So that one was removed, and the more detailed version from the WCA was kept in. Everyone's okay with that.
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
So, I know I'm not there very often, but when I am there, I do a lot of texting with my employees, because they'll send me texts, and I'll have to answer them, so I, what, what's the recommendation then at that point? Because I don't text people on the county board when I'm there, but what's gonna be the recommendation if you're doing work from a county board meeting?
I got an attorney sitting next to me.
Yeah, I, I, I share the same concern, uh, that, that Mr. Sorensen, uh, does. I mean, what, what you're trying to avoid is, uh, annoying public records requests, or the perception that you're somehow communicating with other, other board members. I, I think, you know, if you're so busy, um, I, I don't know if there's, you know, there's a way that you can limit whatever it is that you're texting employees about during board meetings, that would be my recommendation. Uh, or if you're going to text, or if you have to text, that, again, that you leave the room, uh, yeah, that's my.
Yeah, I, I like that, I mean, I like that option, is to just get up and walk out, instead of texting in the middle of the meeting, get up, walk out, finish your text, and be done. I guess that's what I just wanted clarification on, so that everybody does the same thing when, when or if something happens.
Twenty-three. Those problems with twenty-three. Twenty-four. Twenty-five. Twenty-five. One-sixty. One-seventy. Uh, looking for the motion to.
The motion to adopt the county board rules as to changes made. Or changes.
Yeah, I'm trying to go back to all the meetings, and maybe Danny can fix me here. I tried to go back to a meeting now, but I look at one, and I'm starting to forget.
Yeah, no. I'd say mandatory training once a month.
Twice a month for me.
It's twice, twice for me.
With this group, I'd say every thirty minutes.
Is there any other discussion on the appendix A?
You set this up.
You use it.
I'm just kidding, what's up? I think I have the same issue that Dennis has.
Because if there's only two of them, I'm gonna call them all personally. You're good, Danny?
Yeah, I'm liking everybody.
There's any other discussion on it? Oh, as I'm calling the bullet, Abby, is it yes? As a sixteen to nothing, alright, we are on. Do your work, you're winning. Yep. Sixty-four, Kyle.
Alright, resolution sixty-four, twenty-twenty-five, if adopted, the Market County Board of Supervisors approves the twenty-twenty-six budget documents citing the total appropriations of thirty-two million, six hundred seventy-eight thousand and twenty dollars to be offset by anticipated revenues of fifteen million, two hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and two dollars, which includes one million, five hundred ninety-six thousand, eighty-one dollars for sales tax, and further offset by one million, five hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars from the general fund balance. The resulting tax levy is fifteen thou- or fifteen million, eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and three dollars.
I have a motion, sorry, Peggy's the first.
Okay. Um, the first thing I would like to say is that I take exception to the budget as it was presented, and Ron, maybe you can clarify what you said, but you said if we make reductions in the budget, that it would decrease the levy, but. Okay, because to my way of thinking, if we decrease things in the budget, it would decrease how much we're pulling on the general fund.
You get mad, it all depends on where you might wanna cut.
Okay, well, I have a few amendments, but I'll just start with one. Um, I would like to, um, on page thirty, the Hope House budget is ten thousand. I would like to reduce that to two thousand. And on page forty-three, um, under the transportation trust fund, I would like to increase that from five thousand to thirteen thousand. So in other words, taking the eight thousand from Hope House and putting it into the transportation trust. We have a, we just had a committee meeting showing that we have four vans, one of which is going to be replaced this year. Another one needs to be replaced within two years, and we'll only have half of the money available to replace that van. And that's used for the elderly, for the disabled, for the veterans, to take them to their medical appointments. And I think we should keep money in Market County as much as we can, and take care of our needs here. And that Hope House is one of the areas where that money could come out of.
What were your numbers again, Peggy?
Um, Hope House from ten thousand down to two thousand, and the transportation trust from five thousand to thirteen thousand.
I'd second that.
Do you second that?
I do second that.
Okay, motion is second, is there any discussion on that? Kathleen?
You know that Market County residents use Hope House, though.
Yeah, okay.
I know, but they also go to other counties, I mean, that's.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Well, the other, I guess the other question I have is, is there another way, not in this budget, but another way to get money for that van? Or can that van be used another year?
I would defer to Mandy on the strategy of the van replacements. But we would have, we would have to count these as separate things, if you wanna reduce Hope House, reduce Hope House. We just can't automatically shift money around like that, but, but you can do it separately, as an amendment.
Well, my, yeah, well, my question is, is there another way to have that van, or can that van be kept for another year?
Well, I mean, anytime you're gonna put, so the five thousand that we take off the top, we take off of our state grant every year to put in for the match. So we apply for grant money, and then we are responsible for the match, and whatever upgrades that we have to the vans to make them accessible, or that sort of thing. So besides that, there's no other way to get that money necessarily, except for tax levy. Potentially shared revenue, because it's transportation, but I think Ron and I would have to look at the details. I'm not completely up to date on that, or comfortable. Otherwise, the reality is, is yes, we will use the van another year, as long as it's safe, and that sort of thing, right? I mean, if we're using it, it's in service, it then becomes the rotation of what the state recommends for mileage, and then if we have lots of maintenance, right, sometimes you get these vans, they have issues, you're paying more in maintenance than you are, and that sort of thing. So, yeah, I mean, would we continue to use it and try to keep it in good repair as long as possible? Absolutely, we do that anyway, though. The other thing about these specialty vans is that even when we apply for funding and we get those, depending on what's going on in the market, we will wait anywhere from six months is probably the earliest we've ever got one, to up to two years, right? Because we have to wait for state vendors, we have to get the specialized vehicle, then we have to get, um, all the, you know, the lifts, and all of, these are real trucks. So that's the only other issue.
Just piggybacking on to what Mandy said, we just had our ADRC meeting, um, the other day, and that's the problem. Last van we got, we ended up waiting like almost twenty months for it to arrive, so that's an issue. The other thing is, is I'm not trying, I don't want to diminish anything that Hope House does for us, because what they do is very, very important. But we have an alternative to Hope House as well, CAP Services provides the same type of service, we're part of their consortium, and we should be utilizing them and the services that they provide more often, so we can use them as a backup to Hope House as well.
Oh, I must.
You didn't even know you did it.
Okay, chap.
Alright, uh, I struggle with all of this, and I appreciate Peggy's comments to reallocate the eight thousand, but we haven't done anything to address the budget. I for one am imposed to take in one and a half million out of the general fund. I think we have to take some serious cuts, and I disagree with Ron that we can wait till twenty-twenty-six, or twenty-twenty-seven, rather. We have to do it now, there are things that we could do, but I think we have to take at least a million dollars out of the budget. I know Ron wanted us to come forward with suggestions, I've got a long list of them. I, I, right now, I can't support the budget as presented, and I don't know if we wanna take each one individually, or whatever. Maybe we need to take a vote on the budget as presented, and find out the, the lay of the land. I, I agree with, uh, what Scott said at exec and finance, we need to hash this out, and we need to hash this out now. And I, it's gonna be tough, it's gonna be hard, I think, to get to our number, and I'm gonna just throw a wild one out there, a million dollars from general fund, I might have a way to go with that, but I think we ought to look strongly at no new hires, no new positions for twenty-twenty-six, I think we should look at seriously, and if we do take money from the general fund, I would like to see us put in, back in, the COLA. I think we should practice what we preach and when we say we're concerned about our staff and morale, we should put our money where our mouth is. And so I think if we're going to go with anything out of the general fund, I'd like to see it go to the employees before we go to normal programming. We have to get our budget in line. I like what Ron says, the pie is only so big. We had that same issue last year. We lowered the levy limit, we cut six hundred and seventy thousand dollars out of the budget last year that we could have had if we kept it flat. And wouldn't we be in far better shape today if we had an extra six hundred and seventy thousand? We didn't want to make the hard, tough decision next last year because we said we'll handle it down the road. We are kicking this can way down the road. We need to stop the bleeding now. We need to stop the spending now. We gotta make those hard decisions. I'm with Scott, shut the door, we're here till we can bud, work a budget, but we need to cut. And we don't need to approve a million and a half coming out of the general fund. We took, what, seven hundred and seventy out of the general fund in June or July to balance twenty twenty-four? What are we gonna have to do in June or July next year? We're gonna have to take out five to six hundred thousand to balance twenty twenty-five. And then you want to take another one point five million out of the general fund? We're getting way too low. Uh, I have other areas I would cut and I can outline them, but I'd like to know where we're gonna go. Because if we're gonna go with one point five million out of the general fund, I would just as soon get my no vote in. And if everyone else likes it, so be it.
It's three, yeah, Hope House's allocation of ten thousand down to two thousand and put it into the Transportation Trust Fund, increasing that from five thousand to thirteen thousand.
That's what we're discussing.
Right.
Great, go ahead.
I, I want, Joel, you're here. What do you think about the Hope House? And, you know, do you use it often?
We do with domestic violence.
And, and is there a reason that you don't use CAP Services more or?
Necessarily because I'm aware of the whole policy and likes that.
Okay.
We had a discussion on moving that eight thousand, moving that to the Transportation, the E D R C.
Do you need that as two separate motions? I heard that.
Accounting part of it.
No.
You can do it, you can do it in one motion. But on the accounting side, that's two different things.
All right, is there any, need any more clarification? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Three or four? Four. Four opposed. That motion carries. Next motion.
And there's a motion on the floor to approve the budget as is with, so do, do we need anyone, any amendment that Peggy made?
Uh, unless there's another amendment.
Ryan, are you feeling that it, I mean, I can edit it, but obviously you all go with that.
I just have a question, okay, the premiums are gonna be reduced, is that gonna be reflected in your numbers?
Yeah, anything we change tonight with an amendment will be put into that budget, that will be revised and come out. We've had, even this past week with open enrollment, we've had a number of people either sign up for insurance, health insurance, or say they don't want health insurance. So it's always kind of in flux. And there, we have officially, so I'm getting trouble, Kylie, there is a motion on the floor to, uh, what did you say?
As, as now amended because that amendment passed.
The vast amount, uh, speaking to Chuck, we're not in front of this.
Uh, just point of information, if we vote, is now the time for me to make a motion saying not to take one point five million out of our general fund? Or is that better served at a later date in time?
I think we'd have to vote on that. Vote on the floor.
Yeah, the, the motion is properly presented. And if it's seconded, then there would be a vote on the motion and presumably if the budget is approved as presently amended, that would end the discussion.
Right. But if it is, if it doesn't approve, then the other motion would be.
Further discuss, correct.
Are you talking about?
Peggy's next. Well, and that's my point is I'm not sure if it would be an amendment. I, and I don't know if that would work, an amendment to the budget saying we cut one point five million out of the budget. Or if we should correctly vote on the motion on the floor, see where that goes, and then if we have to do more, let's do more.
Motion on the floor as of this time is to approve the amended person. Or Peggy?
Peggy.
Okay, I have another amendment.
No, there, there's a motion properly before, but, uh, I don't know if it's been seconded. Has it been seconded? Yeah, so we could have discussion, but then there's gonna be a vote on the motion. That's, that's.
I wanna amend the motion to approve that, the budget. I'm making another amendment to that.
So there.
A motion to amend the budget.
Uh, understood, but, but right now there's a motion properly before the board to approve the budget as amended with your, your amendment. Um, and, and so now the board, there, there's discussion and then the board has to vote yes or no on, on that. And if they vote yes, then that ends the, I mean, then the budget is as amended is approved.
I can't make another amendment?
No.
That's not what she said, though.
I'm sorry?
That's not what she said. She wanted to make an amendment to move ten thousand dollars and five thousand dollars back and forth. We're all, we're all know that, which has been approved, but she's not meaning to completely approve the whole budget. Because he wants to put, make an amendment to it too. And that's what this whole, oh, second, the first and second on here is for discussion so we can amend, do this, that, and the next thing to the budget. Not have one person making a motion to move five thousand dollars and say, okay, if we say yeah, then the budget passes and we all go home. That ain't what she meant. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Shouldn't the amendments have been all together instead of just the one?
So what, what, what I heard, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, what, what I heard is someone said, and I believe it was, uh, sir, I think it was you, saying, let's just do an up or down vote right now and, and see whether we approve the, the budget. And that was seconded. And so now there's debate and now there, there needs to be a vote on whether or not you guys want to approve the budget as amended with, uh, those, those minor changes that we just discussed.
That's what I understand.
Yes, correct. By us?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of this budget. My problem is the one point five million from the general fund. Ron states that we can afford it now, but we'll have to change next year. My problem with it is the one point five is the starting point next year without any over, just like we see every mayor June to resolve last year's budget overtures and any increase by next year's life. So if you approve this budget, next year's budget starts with this one point five billion coming out of next year's general fund already inherently built in. So this means next year, whoever's here after the election is looking at not a one point five million reduction to get back to zero. Following the trend, you're looking at a two point three million reduction as we're seeing our budget go up about eight hundred thousand every year. So I ask you, I'm not gonna play your heartstrings, but I ask you, what's better to cut? One and a half million by something now or two point three million next year? What's gonna be the more survivable cut? We close the door and we figure it out today and make our situation next year better? Or we sit here and beat each other up should we be here next year at a starting point of two point three if we're lucky? Which if we go by this year's trend, it could be three million with today's numbers. Those are the hard facts. Nobody wants to make the cuts and whatever the budget is, the budget will be. But whatever we approve tonight, know it, whatever comes out of the general fund is our starting point next year.
Julie?
I can respect what Peggy attempted to do, um, or did do. She wanted to take money from one place and put it in another. But I go right back to Chuck and Lance, I agree, that doesn't solve the problem. All it does was we moved eight thousand dollars from one position to another spot. And I just want to be clear that the motion on the floor is to approve it, but just basically moving the eight thousand dollars from point A to point B. We're still with this motion approving a one point five million from the general fund. So if we want to work this out and, and try to solve this and not take one point five million from the general fund, you need to vote this down.
Or Peggy could rescind her motion.
It's not her move, Peggy's first and then you, Abby.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I just wanted to say that I, I thought that you could make a series of amendments to, to the budget to reduce other specific things. Because Ron had said, give me the page, give me the item, tell me what the, the dollar amount is that you want to reduce. And so that was my intention and I was just starting with one item on there. And I agree, this budget is not responsible to the taxpayers or to the people who are even using the services. Because I believe there's a lot of misallocation of money that could be better spent in different ways. And I also don't approve the budget as it is.
Yeah, Peggy, you're up.
So I wasn't able to, uh, attend the prior, um, citizen meeting, but I want to express my complete displeasure in having to be put in this position to now potentially figure out how we're gonna cut one and a half million dollars out of this budget when this is my only option to vote no on this. And we're all going to sit here and fight over the little things when I feel like, Ron, this is your job to guide us to not have to make a decision of taking one and a half million dollars out of the budget or adding one and a half million dollars and now have to make us decide right now where these cuts are going to be. So I'm just very disappointed in the whole process because it never should have gotten to this point, especially when we've been taking out operational type loans for highway and everything else for the last couple of years that we have to pay off too. So I'm just disappointed, I'm not gonna vote for this.
All right.
I just, excuse me, I just have a question, like, for those of you who want to cut one point five out of the budget, that money goes back to the general fund. So we either, we have to spend it somewhere. Are we gonna cut services or are we gonna mandate or cover the services? I mean, you just, just because you're gonna cut one point five doesn't mean that money disappears. It goes back into the general fund because that seem what we're taking to balance the budget. So unless you have some ideas on what you're gonna do with one point five million dollars of taxpayer money that's sitting in the general fund and you start cutting services, I think you're gonna have a lot of people here wondering, you know, what, what, what services are you gonna provide? And if you, uh, don't give our employees some kind of a COLA increase or whatever, I mean, there won't be anything left. There won't be any departments, there won't be services provided. So think, think of that before you decide to cut one point five million from the budget.
You can only say one thing too about the one point five. I just want to clarify, that one point five includes, uh, the COLA, the health insurance premium adjustments as well as the out of home placement cost. That's probably three fourths of the one point five million. So if you say, well, cut a million or cut whatever, understand that one of those three are gonna be affected. So the out of home placement cost for this, for this next budget, we front loaded it because that's what the trend says it was gonna hit. So instead of doing the ending where we have to pay for it the following year with all the budget, we're actually front loaded it this time. So you knew what it probably was gonna be. So if you're gonna make cuts, and I, I commend all the department heads on the budgets that they presented. They followed the instructions right down the list. And when we got to committee, there were more than one committees that actually started adding stuff back in to the budget, which was counterintuitive to what I was trying to do to begin with. So that's why I want to clarify what I said, if you're gonna cut, tell me. You gotta tell me how much and where. Because again, if you do a ten percent across the board, what's ten percent gonna be to the veterans department? That's huge. You know, where are they gonna cut? Or any other department, especially the small ones. So again, it's not just as simple as saying, well, we gotta cut a million or one point five, whatever. Understand that one of those three things are gonna be affected. That's right.
That's all state.
And I will say what I said at Exec and Finance is that I understand the budget crunch for N and every department in this county is just as valid as the, as the next one in running, in making the county run as a whole. But I for one am fed up with trying to balance a budget on the backs of those departments that provide health, safety, and welfare to the citizens of our county. They depend on that. And I might be in the minority on that, but I will stand by that with this budget, I'm sorry. And I think if you ask the taxpayers and you put it out there, they're gonna tell you, they want those services at any cost because that's what's important to them, is that there's something there if they need it.
Man.
I was just gonna say, if we are gonna take a large portion of that out, uh, preserve it in the general fund, we have to do it thoughtfully. We have to really think about all the things that if you do this, these things could be affected, not just one, but multiple things could be affected. So as much as I would like to say, yeah, let's hash it out tonight, let's go through the whole thing and figure out, well, who's gonna cut? Who's gonna get some and who's, who's not? We have to be thoughtful about this because it is going to affect services to some degree. And especially if that's gonna mean further staff cuts. Because that's, that's where we're at now. We've already cut those eight positions that I thought we could cut these positions and absorb that work, we've done that. So now we're at that point where if there's additional staff cuts, that's gonna be directly tied to services. So those services will be.
And revenues.
Well, and revenues too. So again, and cutting some departments, if you did cut them ten percent, it's gonna be reflected on the revenue side for sure. So, so again, if, if that's your plan, if you're gonna oppose the budget, you're not gonna do this tonight or you're gonna make these cuts tonight, be, be understanding of the fact that it's going to affect some departments more heavily than others. And I'm not saying that I'm not in favor of cutting the budget. I just want to say we need to be more strategic about what we've been doing uh, and, and move this into twenty-six so we can sit, really sit down and figure out how we are going to make those cuts. And if we don't realize the out of home placement cost that we front loaded, that money comes back to the general fund. We may not spend that much, that's just a projection. So that's what I had to say.
Lance?
I'm not saying we have to zero the budget. I'm not, I don't know what the number is. But what I said three years ago when I got on this board, when we balanced the budget, balancing a budget is the easy part. Living within your budget is the hard part. And where did we go from a balanced budget? We went to four hundred thousand, then we went to eight hundred thousand. Now we're at one point five million. And what I said earlier is if you follow that line, we're going to be at two point three million next year. And the problem I have with, and I agree with Mary, it's taxpayers' money. We need to spend it. But you can't spend general fund on operational costs because your costs go up faster than your general fund. And now you've allocated that expense and you run out of general fund. And now you're bankrupt. And so yes, if we're over our 25% and we need to return that back to the taxpayers, that's a capital expense. Put it into your buildings, put it into your capital expense. The taxpayers get their money back and it's a one-time expense. But you can't keep spending your way out of debt because you're just digging deeper and deeper in. One point five million is not my goal, but going up eight hundred thousand every year? We don't have another year. I'm telling you that. Look at the trend. If we can't make the cuts tonight, you guys are fooling yourself that you're going to be able, if you're here, to do it next year. And what did we say three years ago? Oh, we'll do it next year. Four hundred thousand. We'll do it next year. Eight hundred thousand. We'll do it next year. One point five million.
I just have more faith in the process than this.
Lucky you.
Well.
You're on the list.
Okay.
Well, just, just to comment, nobody likes the way it's budget is, but people have come to me and they want only services.
People come to me and said, thanks for standing up. Eighty-five percent to EMS is ridiculous. I, I mean, they come to me the same way. I've had nobody come to me and say, I'm in favor of one point five million every year. Yeah, they may say that they want the services, but you sit down and explain to them that EMS came in at 50% increase this year and they said, hell yeah, pay a hundred. Let's get six more ambulances. Has anybody said that? They say it based on limited information. Part of my problem with this process is, just like tonight, we need a public affairs officer. We need to let people know what the details are, not just the churn because somebody said. We need a public affairs officer to inform the, the public of the exact facts of the situation. Yeah, they want services. Do they know what the cost is? I'm here to tell you they don't. They just say, hey, when I call nine one one, I want an ambulance. They don't know when it's going up 44% to the tune of one million dollars every year. And I guarantee if you say that, nobody's going to jump on board and say, raise my taxes. Yes, they want the services and they understand just like I do. Three to five percent is an understandable increase in today's world. Five to seven nowadays with the economy the way it is. That's understandable. Forty-four percent, 25%? 10, 12%? We got to do a better job. And it ain't tomorrow.
Well, I've said it in the past, then I'll say it again. If that number doesn't necessarily have to be 10%, but you've been kicking the can, not just you, the guy before you and the guy before you and the guy before him. Every year it's got kicked down the road. But we'll do it next year. We'll take some out of the general fund. We'll do this. It gets kicked down the ear, all down the road all the time. And yes, people want services. Okay, I agree with that. But we do double dip in services. Your fund that you said that the sheriff should be using and the sheriff is using the Hope House because he doesn't have them around him with the other people. I mean, there's a lot of different double services going on. We should only be doing the mandated services because we can't afford to do all the services. And as you keep kicking everything down the road, like Lance says, next year, two point what million? It'd probably be three point million. Okay, a- and you can't keep doing it. So you're going to have to sit down and make the cuts, put the big boy pants on and say, you know what? The whole world can get mad at me if they want. I don't care. Right? But if you got to cut X amount of people out of this department, X amount of people out of this department, the one you mentioned used to be a part-time position years ago. A lot of them could go down a couple days. Okay? Every time Joe Blow walks in the office over there, he doesn't have to see somebody. Maybe they're only there Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday because it's a part-time job. That's the way it used to be. Uh, another thing you're doing wrong that I think is so terrible wrong where you're getting rid of squad cars. Okay, instead of letting Joe buy cars, you're going to lease them all. And it looks good on paper for three years. Well, in three years, when you no longer have any cars and these cars go from fifty thousand dollars to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars because you're going to have to buy some because you can't afford to lease no more, what are you going to do? Okay, I think getting rid of squad cars are terrible. I think you need to sit down with this budget again and take that million and a half out of it. Okay? And if the departments have to cut 5%, 10%, whatever it is, if you want to go along with it like that, that's fine. Or leave the one and a half million in there, but put it on the tax levy and give it to the people so they can pay for it. Instead of going, look, oh, I got your taxes down another 30 cents this year, but you really didn't. Okay? Understand what I'm saying? Hope so. That's it. Let's vote.
Well, I mean, I agree we have to get a handle, a better handle on the budget, but we, we, nobody keeps reminding us that, or maybe they do and we don't listen, is that out of home placement thing is taking up so much money. And, and the, you know, like Ron said, the major costs in this budget are, are the COLA costs, the health insurance costs and that out of home placement cost. So we would be cutting things that are in my mind essential services to pay for things that we're going to have to figure out how to pay for anyway. And, uh, you know, I've been reading some, some things about how counties are doing things and, and you know, the safety part of the budget, e- every single county is having problems with that because we're not unique in that. And they're trying to figure out how to pay for the, the police and the, and the EMS. And it, it's like that all over this, the, it's just skyrocketed. It's not just our departments that are, are, um, getting, are increasing the cost. It's all over. Uh, and you know, I have, you know, I have a citizen come up to me all the time and say, you know, we don't need all that sheriff stuff. We don't need the guy standing at that front door of that courthouse. Um, but you know what? Knowing what kind, what the political atmosphere is in this country today, I wouldn't want to work in that courthouse without that guy standing down there. I'll tell you that right now. Um, and so public safety is a big, huge part of this and I think we just have to pay for it. I don't, and I agree with what Mary said about that, um, you know, that one point five million. Um, that, what are you going to do with it? We save it. What are we going to do with it then? You know, not like we can't find things to do with it, but the general fund is there partly so we have money um, to use to balance a budget. And we don't know, I don't know how you, you know, you, you know, the chart that Ron had on the board where it goes up and down. You don't know that it's going to go up again, Lance, next year, that eight hundred thousand dollars. It's been going up and down all the time. I mean, for years.
I know we keep saying yes, and yes means it goes up. I haven't heard a no in three years.
Well, I think everybody's opinion is valid and I think, you know, it was, we, it was fair to listen to Kathleen and, and I, I have to agree with her. There are some things that, um, we have to fund and if we cut one point five million, the only thing we have control over is the COLA and the health insurance. Out of home placements is something we have to pay regardless of we like it or not. And we all have constituents that we talk to. And every one of us can sit here and say, my constituents say, we don't want this. But my constituents I talked to say, yes, we do want this and we know how much it's costing and we still want it. So that's a catch 22 and that should just be removed from the table because that's just a back and forth. Your constituent says this, mine says that. Okay, it balances each other out. So when it comes down to the nuts and bolts, we have one point five million dollars that we can take from the general fund to balance this budget. And almost, what, a third of it at least is for out of home placements approximately, which we have no control over. We have to fund that, whether you people like it or not. And if we don't front load it, then we'll back here next year after the audit and we're going to have to take it out of the general fund anyway to pay for it. So what's the difference if we front loaded or pay for it after the fact? Mandy did a really good job with Ron trying to predict. And that department does an excellent job trying to keep people out of out of home placement. And Mike, you know this, you were chair for a long time.
I know. I'm wondering what every word you're saying right now. And I know Mandy does a wonderful job.
And there are some things that are just beyond your control that you're going to have to pay for no matter what.
But that's what the general fund's for.
Exactly, and that's why.
Okay, the general fund is for when you do go over like she did with, with, and she didn't go over. I mean, the state did. And that's something the auto get together and start petitioning the state that they got to do something, but that's another discussion. But when you do go over that stuff, sit, you predict what you think it's going to be this year, but you don't throw extra dollars into it because the extra dollars can stay in the general fund.
Here's the issue. Hopefully this prediction, if you pass it, we are scheduled, our, our, our talk, we've talked a lot about out of home placements. One point three nine million is what we have in the budget for out of home placements for 2026. That's an additional three hundred and eighty some thousand dollars. Here's the issue. Hopefully we will correct the overage. We're set, we're scheduled to be under five hundred thousand dollars in an overage for 2025. The issue has become is that historically, we have not budgeted what I've asked for based on my prediction, which is part of the problem. So theoretically, if we stay within our budget, we're not going to be adding that on to the end of the year so that obviously our costs are increasing, but theoretically they're not increasing that high because we don't have that. Right? And so that's the issue. Historically, this board, whether it's been you or somebody else, has said, we're going to roll the dice and we're going to make the budget look nice. So we appreciate your recommendation about what you're going to spend on out of home placements, children and adults, but we're not going to budget that because we're going to keep additional money in the general fund. You continue to do that right now, I'm telling you that we will continue to come back and have to ask more and more and more and more, which then only increases between the costs going up and the placements. We are trying in this budget for 2026 to ask for an accurate budget. And I am telling you, I would really like to keep it because if you don't want to follow my recommendation, then it's going to be this vicious cycle over and over and over again because I'm telling you, I need one point three nine million and you're going to give me eight hundred thousand and the math doesn't add. That's the issue with the placements. Now, obviously I don't have a crystal ball. It could go up, it could go down. Hopefully it goes down and we don't spend that. But we're working our butts off to make sure that people aren't in out of home care. But it is a safety service. When they have to go in out of home care, it's because they cannot safely stay in their home, whether they're a child or an adult. So I just want to be clear about how that works. I know it's a big ask on this budget, but I also heard from a lot of you that we want to be accurate about what our costs are going to be. And so if you want to cut placements, that's fine, but then we're not accurate and we're already in the home lore.
And that's why I said then we got to raise the levy instead of taking it out of the general fund. Because if that's what it costs to do business, you got to make more money someplace. Only place this place makes any money is taxing it before and giving to the rich, let's say. But that's, you got to raise the levy. I know you're limited, but, but, but when you're broke and you need some money, you got to raise the levy. And you can go, it's set by law, but you can, uh, at the annual meeting, we've done it in the town of McCann three, four times, said, okay, we need X amount of money. You get the voters to come in and say yes or no, or this, that, and the next thing. So this, this is not new to me here. Yeah, a little bit, but you can still.
Peggy, no, you never had it. Mike didn't have it. You didn't have it.
Kind of took it.
Okay, I just want to say that, um, if, you know, I've heard a suggestion to cut each department by 10%. And I don't think that's the right direction either. I've heard, you know, cut the whole thing by one and a half million. I don't think that's the right direction. But I think we need to cut some things from the budget this year. And we need to do that thoughtfully because some departments have scraped and they've already cut positions and they've already done other things to try to come in under budget. And other departments have not done that. And so I think you can look at strategic places to reduce the budget. And I don't think we're going to cut one and a half million out of it. But maybe we could get to three hundred thousand or three hundred and fifty thousand and then keep working on it next year. Don't wait till September to say, oh, we're in a problem. Start working on it now. Reorganize. Start thinking more, um, forward thinking, how is this going to impact? And don't drop the ball now after we pass the budget. Keep working at it.
Mike stole my thunder, but I mean, we can sit here and speculate all you want, but I would say if the new cost of doing business in Marquette County is the, what's the total budget, fifteen eight ninety-nine, and that's one point five million over the levy limit? Then you put it on a referendum to the taxpayers and say, we need to raise the levy limit because that's the cost of doing business. If all your constituents say yes, then you'll raise your levy limit and you'll have the money you need to operate. That takes speculation out. That gives you the cost.
I was just going to ask Mandy about that thirty-three thousand dollar figure that we heard during the public hearing. It being the high per month for one individual. Is any of that state aid?
No.
That's all levy?
Correct.
It's all budget?
Placements are all levy. And for those of you who don't sit on our committee, I know we talked about it and I've talked to Kathy about this. It's not unique to us. We've done lobbying efforts. In fact, Peggy invited Alex Dahlman to come to our human services board to talk about what else the state's going to do. The reality is, is placements are tax levy. We're required to do them. It's a mandated service and there is no aid for it.
Yeah, I just know the human services in the state budget changes every two, every time they pass a new state budget. So I just want to know if anything.
We get lots of other funding for lots of other things, not for placements.
I don't know what we can add to this. I guess I would like to call the question and let's vote on the motion on the floor. That would be great because I've been waiting to hear from you. So, and you've been slow on jumping in, Kathy.
Yeah, but it's part of my job is to make sure I hear from each and every one of you and give everybody the opportunity to do that. That being said, I think Ron and all the department heads did an excellent job of putting this all together. Okay? Yes, Lance pointed out that we're taking a one point five million dollar draw out of the budget with this, with this budget. But that's excess we have that exceeds our, that leaves us in our parameters for what we should be carrying over. So we're still within the range. Yes, and nobody's going to argue that we need to get lean, very lean, very fast. But to hold this budget hearing hostage, so to speak, to do that, I think Ron has a plan. That is why we hired him. To, we're not going to go crazy here because if we put that money back and as Mike's point, give it back to the taxpayers, this is politically incorrect, but I'm going to say it anyway. If we put that one and a half million dollars off the tax levy and our tax rate drops, you think we got a three million dollar problem this year or next year? It's going to double that because we won't be able to go back up. We have to hold that tax levy as flat as we can or we're in trouble. And if we start making these cuts, we're doing a downward dive and we're shooting ourselves in both foot at the same time. So I think for common sense, and this is just, I'm oversimplifying this. I think Ron has a plan. He came up with a budget that he thinks he can make work. Let's hold him accountable to it and see if he can do it. And on that notion, I'm going to call the question.
I thought I did.
I did.
When are we actually voting now?
The question is on the budget as amended. The only changes to the budget as presented are the ones Peggy made in the beginning. Correct?
And Mr. Chair, we have no problem with this.
I'll start with you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Born Hock.
No.
Tanner.
Yes.
Templey.
No.
Prousey.
No.
Trent.
Yeah.
Locke.
No.
McWen.
Yes.
Nickber?
Oh.
Raditz?
No.
Sorenson?
Yes.
Swan?
No.
Walters?
Yes.
Activer?
No.
Bennett?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Well, it's not just a tie because Mr. Fraser's, plus it, yeah, you need, um, it has a, it's a two thirds members elect. You only have four noes because Jeff is already a noe.
Three, we don't.
Technically, a nine noes.
Four?
So.
So did it pass or not?
No, it tied, so it ties along.
No, it's, no, it wasn't even tied.
These are two thirds, first of all.
If you call the question, it's two thirds, correct? Yes.
What was the tally, Kylie?
It was eight to eight, but because, um, Mr. Fraser's not here, a no vote or an absent vote is a no, essentially, because it's members elect.
And then it has to be two thirds.
How can an absent vote be a no, automatic no?
That's on.
Or yes?
No, well, I brought the statue, because I knew everybody would fight.
If the guy ain't here, it should be abstained, he didn't vote one way or the other, he or she.
The no.
Amount of tax to be levied or certified, the amounts of various appropriations and purposes for such appropriations stated in a budget required. Authorized on your sub one N may not be changed unless authorized by vote of two thirds of the members elect of the governing body of the municipality.
Point order? Go ahead, Gary.
I believe that means that to amend an adopted budget. For instance, let's say in February, some department wanted a new position, and it was gonna amend the budget by appropriating funds for it. Yes, you would have to have two thirds to do it at that point. But to pass the budget, I think it's simple majority, if it's eight to eight, it did not carry.
Right.
But my point is, a simple majority can pass a budget. And then to amend it down the road through the year, it's the two thirds thing.
Well.
Yeah.
Either way, you're at a no.
Yes.
I can change it in the system, that's what I printed off because I'm like, every year this comes up. But I do need, I honestly do need everybody to vote this in their system. That's still a thank you, cuz I can't add a new.
I need what you voted. Oh, you got that.
I, I, I think there may have been some confusion that it takes two thirds to call, call the vote, or to call the question, rather. Which is what I thought we were talking about, but yeah, to pass the budget, it's, it's a, a majority, which we don't have, it's a tie, so it fails.
Hey, you guys aren't going home till we got a budget. Lock the door. What do you wanna do? Gary?
Well, I believe it's in order to hear the other amendments that Peggy and Chuck were talking about then, because we have failed to pass a budget. And it's obvious there are members that want to make some further changes. So doesn't that open the floor back up for any suggestions for amendments?
It does.
Peggy, you started this.
Okay.
Amendment two.
I would make a motion to pass the budget with the following adjustments. Veteran services on page eighty four to be, to reduce the, um, two full-time positions to one and a half. As passed by the committee. In addition, to decrease the planning and zoning, uh, budget, page eighty seven, the zoning specialist. To reduce that to fifty percent with a savings of thirty seven thousand. And on the EMS, page twenty eight, to, um, reduce two positions. That were going to be added in, and that's a savings of one fifty eight, six forty one. So those three changes. I'll second that.
Further discussion. Kathleen?
Who just said I disagree with that?
I, I disagree with everything too, but if my hot water heater at home goes out and I have no money, I guess I'm gonna be taking showers and being cold.
But we do have money to make this budget work.
We've said that for, I have been on the board now for five sessions, which is ten years. And it's been that way for every year that I have been on it.
And we're on bankrupt?
We're damn close to it, because we need to up taxes. Our only thing is to up taxes, and you either have to pay them, or you're not gonna be here. We have to get the money somewhere, we can't keep taking it out of little people's pockets. Get the people that need money taken out of their pockets. There's people that can afford it, but of course, they're the greedy ones, and they're not gonna give you a nickel. Cuz I know I have a brother and sister just like that, and they'd rather take a quarter from me. So we have to start do, somewhere. So the starting somewhere would be raising taxes, uh, uh, the next polls, put it on a referendum, we need to raise taxes. Or this is what's gonna happen to our colony.
Chuck, you have the floor.
Okay, we're talking about Peggy's motion, but I have additional items I would like to suggest we add to that list. Should that be added to her motion with another motion?
That's up.
Help.
It's up to Peggy.
Or, or would it be an amendment to the amendment?
It, it would be an amendment to your, your motion, yes.
He wants it to add on.
I wanna add on. I don't think we should fund any new staff for twenty twenty six. And that would take three hundred some thousand out of the sheriff's budget. It would take what Peggy's recommending out of the EMS budget. I would like to also see us try and get the COLA up to four percent from the two percent that we're at. So that would be adding to it. So what we just reduced there, probably that's gonna chew up the bulk, the bulk of that. But I think we, our people deserve a four percent raise for twenty twenty six.
I can put a number to that, Chuck, to increase that COLA would be an additional two hundred and twenty one thousand, one hundred and eighty seven dollars.
Okay, so I would, you know, take the cuts that Peggy and I have suggested and add that back in. Nowhere tonight have we talked about the, uh, meals for the elderly. Is there a cut to that part of your budget, Mandy?
So we have, as part of our budget proposal, we have reduced the nutrition program by twenty five thousand dollars. That in effect eliminates a point four five and a point three dining site facilitator. So we are looking at cutting two of our dining sites, we have six total. The reality is, is it's not only a budget issue, but we have not recovered from COVID. It has been a long time, and we do not have the numbers at certain sites to make that a good return on investment. So I know it sounds bad, and people don't like that, but having dining sites where we don't have enough people to make it flow. Is not an efficient use of our money, and we have a placement issue, so we need to find the money where it is. Frankly, when Ron talks about needing to make those cuts and needing to do that, we've already got a jumpstart on that, that's why we've chosen to do that. Unfortunately for us, our elderly transportation and nutrition programs have a fair amount of tax levy in them. But it's not only a budget decision, it's also a, let's look at what the data tells us, and the data does not support maintaining six dining sites.
And then I wanna add to, to what Chuck said about EMS and the sheriff's department, we're already in the middle of a remodel to do a separation. That's based on the hiring of those four individuals in the sheriff's department. So to me, it would be a complete waste of why we had to do that, because they're not physically going to be able to relocate if they don't have those additional four staff, correct, Joe?
That's absolutely correct.
And then looking at EMS, um, if we are not going to move forward with the plan that was approved to hire the, uh, one EMT and one paramedic. Which was designed to follow what was supposed to be scheduled all along, when this was first conceived several years ago. That's going to, uh, increase our extra overtime, this was designed to decrease that extra overtime. And, uh, I know Mr. Benson had done some calculations for us early on about, uh, how that would actually help the EMS budget by lowering that extra overtime. So this goes back to what I was saying about being very thoughtful about how we decide, what we decide here tonight, moving forward with reductions in the budget. Because already, we're gonna have a, a remodel, I guess Aaron's gonna have a really nice office, uh, cuz he'll be moving back in there if we don't separate. And we're still gonna have the problems with recruitment and retention that we have had with the jail and my dispatch, as well as the extra overtime that we're, uh, continuing to. Uh, I guess I'll use the word hemorrhage with the EMS service without those extra staff that it was originally designed to have. So again, we gotta think very carefully about the decisions you're gonna make here tonight with these cuts.
Question to Peggy, before we go any further, cuz this was your motion. Are you willing to take Chuck's suggestions to mind and cut the sheriff's department EMS to your motion?
I'm not in favor of cutting the sheriff's department because.
Well, you either gotta take Chuck as a whole or not at all, because it is your, it's your motion on the floor, Peggy. It's, no, he, he's trying to add to your motion. If you approve what he wanted, then it's part of the motion, if you don't, it's not.
Okay, I don't.
You don't, so we're back to your original motion, is what we're dealing with. Thought it's not hand waving. What was the motion, Kylie, so we can put this to record? There wasn't a second.
But Peggy's is to, and I have it programmed, that, that reduce the CVSO assistant position down to fifty percent. Reduce the planning and zoning specialist position down to fifty percent, and reduce the EMS patient position.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, that one was seconded.
That was seconded, yes. All right, so that's a question on the floor, if anyone has a comment, otherwise I'm gonna call the question. All right, all in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Ayes, raise your hands.
For which one?
Right?
First eyes or second eyes? The ones in favor?
Yes.
You said aye.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Roll call it, Kylie.
Sure, Activer?
Yes.
Bennett?
No.
Benson?
No.
Borzek?
No.
Born Hock?
Yes.
Tanner?
Oh.
Templey?
Yes.
Prousey?
Yeah.
Trents?
No.
Locke?
No.
McWen?
No.
Nickber?
No.
Raditz?
Yes.
Sorenson?
No.
Swan?
No.
Walters?
No.
That failed.
The story happened here, go ahead, sorry, do you even have a light up on this?
There is no light up.
There is no light on the screen.
Hey. You know, I, I didn't want to, um, go after current positions, the zoning specialist, that was why I opposed that one. Um, but I still will go forward with no new positions. That includes the administration position for twenty six thousand five hundred, the crop educator, I think that one should go for twelve thousand two hundred. The EMS positions, veteran services goes to, uh, halftime assistant, veteran services, sheriff's department, community support specialists and therapists. That's a pretty big chunk right there.
Community support specialist is already not in the budget.
Okay, there, there was two of them.
We pulled the community support specialist previously when we reworked our budget, so that's already not in the budget.
Okay.
And the therapist position will impact revenue, so. It's not an apples to apples, we can't just say, oh, it cost us eighty thousand, you're gonna save eighty thousand, it's probably more like. Sixty-ish, because it's a revenue generating position.
Is there a second to that motion?
Can you repeat it?
Yeah, I, yeah.
So no admin assistance at all? Correct.
What's the dollar amount, amount also?
I have twenty six thousand five hundred.
The total amount.
I don't have the total because the community support specialist is removed from it already.
So you had the admin, the crop specialist?
Yep.
The veterans' position?
Yep, EMS.
What is EMS, all of it?
Two positions.
Two new hires.
Position, two new positions.
There are four positions in the sheriff's.
Yep.
Is there a second to that motion?
I was waiting for Kylie to get it all added in, but I would second that motion.
Nothing on does it stay under your guidance end right now, progression for twenty twenty five?
Yep.
So Julie would hit her motion button. And then from there, we'll see.
Discussion.
So the therapist position is, is it?
It's out, I'm just saying it's out, I'm just saying you want a total number, it's not the total cost.
Okay.
I have a question.
No, Dennis is up first, Mary, then.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We can agree with some of these cuts, but I'll just go down one by one. Administrative assistant, we don't do something that we're gonna burn out the person that's there, we're gonna lose them, that's just my field. Crops educator, it's a small amount, but I'm not gonna argue one way or another, because we sat and committed with this one here, we went back and forth, so I don't have no issue with that. CVSO assistant, we had, uh, veterans in here. Uh, I think we gotta go, we got a new man that's coming in to the position, Chris Berg was seasoned, he was doing it with two positions, now we're gonna go back to one and a half. I think we're gonna go back on backlog on that position. Yes, I think it can be done properly with one and a half, but when you bring in a new person who's gonna have to learn, yes, he's working here, it's intent. But he's not Chris Berg's level, so I think we gotta watch that. Community support specialist, uh.
That was already out, Dennis.
What?
That was already out.
That was ready to cut, okay, and the ther, and the therapist, okay, can you elaborate on that, you said sixty thousand dollars?
Yeah, I mean, if you guys wanna cut it, that's fine, here's the reality, it's gonna be hard to recruit, we have a vacancy right now from an open position. I think the, the issue is, is that people are waiting a long time to get therapeutic services, but if you guys are fine with that, you're fine with that. The issue about the therapy position is that it costs probably eighty thousand dollars plus to start, but we can bill medical assistance for that. So once they're up and running in season, depending on their client population, who they're serving, they can bring in probably eighty five percent of their costs.
So it pays the cost, that's fifteen percent of the cost?
Correct.
When, when, down to it.
Correct.
I'll also go ahead and add what Mandy has to say there, Dennis, excuse me, Mr. Chair, when it goes ahead and comes to a therapist position, that keeps people out of, out of home placements. So just take that in account.
Yes. Uh, no, I, I don't have anything else other than, people want these services, and I agree with the other guys that are saying this. Maybe we gotta go and adopt this budget this year, this is just off this stuff, go and adopt this budget this year, come back with a referendum. And when you come back with a referendum, the school's gonna be running one the same way. And when you come back with a referendum, the school's going to be running one the same way. If the people say yes, then we are supposed to follow the people's order. And then we'll put the money in and the taxes will go up. That's all there's to it. If the people say no, then they know like what's happening with the school. If they say no, there's going to be deep cuts that year. So, I think we should be on a fast door, on a fast door forward to a referendum. We're seventeen people sitting here, let the whole county say what they want. If they say we can pay more taxes, then that's be it, and then we can have these positions. If they say we don't want to pay it, then it's back on our hoes to make the budget balance. I know, we don't know what's coming back yet into this year's budget, so this can still affect that one point five million, and you're too early to predict on this, Ron, I'm certain, you don't want to throw any money out there. I follow what it is. Number one, we went from four to two percent. If we want to keep employees, I think we got to stay with at least a two percent. You work the two percent in, if we want to keep them, we got to stay at least with two percent. We back stepped to two percent already from four percent, what we were saying. So I'm sure that's not setting good with employees, if they're watching this meeting, or find out tomorrow what went on. But the other stuff, you're being honest and putting these out of home placements. You got thrown under the bus when you asked for the money that had to be split up to cover them the last time. You know, because you didn't have a front load. You're being straightforwardness, and it's, that's where it is. It's there. To step back on the Sheriff's Department and stuff and not give him the employees? Well then, why don't we first of all vote to approve that thing? You know, it's just, it's counterproductive. Same with EMS. Why do we vote way back when, and why do we spend all that money to build three stations if we're thinking of reducing one? Maybe sometime it's going to come down the line where you're not going to be able to fully staff all three at certain times, and Rob can put a trend to that if you can see some savings there. But there too, you were putting the positions in so we don't have to pay overtime. Yes, we'll have insurance on those positions, we don't have insurance on an overtime employee, but these employees can only do so much overtime or they're going to burn out and leave on us too. So I think that's all stuff we got to look at.
Mary. Well, I'll just go down the list as I wrote them. As far as the, the service officer. Chris has spent the last year or more telling us about the increase in the paperwork that's involved with filing not only insurance claims, but paperwork to get people, the benefits for our veterans. That's all time consuming, and the additional health issues that the feds have indicated for our veterans, those are all new health conditions which require more additional paperwork. Anybody in this room, if you have never worked in insurance, you can commiserate with how difficult it would be for a layperson to navigate the health insurance system, whether it's in the private sector or for our veterans. And I, I think we owe it to our veterans, they've done everything for us. We owe it to give them the best service possible. As far as the Sheriff's Department is concerned, we've spent this money. It's already been voted and vetted by the full county board to proceed with the separation, which included the four positions. And I'd like to know what would happen to the grant money if we reneged on it? Would we have to pay that back because we didn't use it for the intent it was meant to be? But we'd eat it, I mean, it'd sit there as an empty, beautiful dispatch center for umpteen years because we're not going to fund it. We owe that to our people as well, and our employees who are doing double duty. And the EMS, by not funding those two extra positions, we're going to be right back in the same position we are now, paying that extra overtime, which is going to eat away at the budget and any general fund balance that we may have or realize. And as far as the therapist position, I have to echo exactly what Dave Benson said. That will directly impact our out of home placements. Because without those therapy services, that directly affects people and whether they remain healthy in the community or not. So I, you know, there's some things you're going to shoot, yeah, you may cut money out of this budget, but you're going to shoot yourself in the foot on the other end. And it's just, you're not going to save that much in, in the long run.
Uh, yes, Sir Mr. Chair, thank you. Uh, I'm looking at this, and I have to go ahead and agree with a lot of Dennis and Mary's comments there. Ron previously testified at this hearing that the, the three largest expenditures for the one point five million are the, are, are the out of home placements, the COLA and the health insurance. You, you know what, I, I, I don't, I like to go ahead and be frugal as well, uh, but I also have to go ahead and say sometimes this is just the cost of doing business folks. And the, the out of home placements, it's a state mandate, we have no control over it whatsoever. The COLA, we got to do something for the employees, the health insurance, we agree to that. We're paying seventy-five percent of that. So it's just the cost of going ahead and doing business. So I, I can't support what's on the floor here Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Well, I, at one point, was leaning toward the original action of the Veteran Service Office, but when I heard the reminder from over here from the public that we've had some recent wars and we have some younger vets coming up too, I, I, I support the two point oh FTE, not reducing that one. And I'm in agreement with the EMS thing that we cut these two positions, more overtime. It, it, it's a riddle, you know, that we're trying to solve, trying to hold down the overtime budget a bit, but it takes full staffing of the paramedic and the EMT coming on board to make that work. So, I'm, I'm a no on, on the amendment here.
Peggy, you're an excellent answer.
And regard to the veterans position, we've been looking at that in the committee, and the calls actually have decreased. There was a big uptick in the calls in twenty-three and twenty-four because there was a change in determination of what qualified. But then we've seen a decrease in that. And in addition, we've been told that the federal government is making changes. They're supporting the veterans better now, they are attacking the homeless problem, and they're also attacking the DD two fourteen problem with them not having that documentation. So, we've been told by the Veterans Department that those will make their life easier, which is good, I, we want that. In terms of the, the EMS department, even with those two positions, the overtime went from three hundred and fifty thousand to over six hundred thousand. So I'm not seeing the two extra positions are decreasing the overtime. And we also, I've been listening to the judicial and public safety meetings, and there's a lot of talk, what are we going to do? And there's also been talk, why would we start two new positions and then end up doing something different where we have to lay them off then? And I'm hearing a consensus from the judicial department that something needs to be done with the EMS department. And in terms of the Sheriff's Department, I agree with Mary about that, that we voted for this separation. It's needed for the, just the, the safety and the way that the personnel are, are, there are two different skill sets in dispatch and in jailers. And this separation is meant to capitalize on the skill sets of both of those groups, and we need the extra sheriff's personnel to accomplish that.
Yeah, I think Dennis's words were very wise. I think passing this budget and then going to the voters to get their input on what they really want next year would be very, very helpful. About the EMS, you know, even if we hire those, I think we should hire those two positions. I, but, and with the turnover that there is in, in that department, and not just in market county, but in other counties too, even if we decided to do something different with that department, I, I don't think it would be a problem that we hire two positions now and then change it later. And I think that, that whole EMS thing is going to take a really long time and really lot of looking at before we decide and if any changes should be made there. So we shouldn't be basing what we do tonight on, on that. And I also think what Ken said earlier, you know, Ron put together a very, very thoughtful budget with all of the, the department heads working really closely with him, I believe. And, and I, it goes back to a matter of trust again, and, and letting him do the job that we hired him to do. Not that we let people run rampant, but I think that the budget that was put forward, is it perfect? Absolutely not. But I think it's doable, and then we continue to work on it next year to see what kind of changes we can make. I think, you know, you take those little halftime positions away from smaller departments, and all you're doing is, is, you know, picking on those small, you know, like zoning and stuff. Those are public service offices. People want, want services when they go into those offices. And when they don't get it, they get mad. And that's a basic service that should be offered, that the county should pay for, for people.
Okay, it is eliminating the administrative assistant, the crops educator, putting the CVSO assistant back to fifty percent, eliminating the community support specialist, which I know is not in the budget, but it was part of promotion. Eliminating the therapist, reducing two EMS positions, and reducing the four sheriff's office positions. Alright, we'll start with Borzek.
No.
Bornhoff?
Yes.
Tanner?
No.
Kemple?
Yes.
Crowsey?
No.
Prince?
No.
Locke?
Yes.
McWinn?
No.
Nicker?
Yes.
Raditz?
Yes.
Sorenson?
No.
Swan?
Yes.
Walters?
No.
Activer?
No.
Bennett?
No.
Denson?
No.
That motion failed.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to go ahead and readapt Resolution sixty-four twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion.
Is your, is your motion for the original motion or the one that Peggy amended with the transaction?
The original motion.
Without Peggy's amendment?
Yeah, with no amendment, it's the original motion.
Okay, thank you.
Denson?
Yes.
Borzek?
Yes.
Bornhoff?
No.
Tanner?
Yes.
Kemple?
No.
Crowsey?
No.
Prince?
Yes.
Locke?
No.
McWinn?
Yes.
Nicker?
No.
Raditz?
No.
Sorenson?
Yes.
Swan?
No.
Walters?
Yes.
Activer?
No.
Bennett?
No.
I go.
Mr. Chair, can I request a five minute recess?
You wait. Five minutes.
Let me get the, scalpels. Monty nut for everybody. We all got to go outside though.
Here's the initial here Peggy. Kylie, Kylie, this is deadline, you're just about to run.
You got a charger, you got a mic?
Oh, I got it from, Danny.
Oh.
Cause my battery was dead.
No, I didn't know they had a, I didn't know they had a battery.
Knowing him, he's got it all.
He probably got everything. More shit than we can ever think, go ahead, think of.
I'm probably happy to grab, he's got, I don't even know where his, uh. Battery's gone bad, it must've been, must've been time to go home.
So, how'd you, how'd you, how'd you done both?
I, it was what I, in my mind.
Is it, is that your second one?
All I am is a guide and a truck and a drag and a cut and a hang and a butcher. Some five grand boys are just, I had five dosenes at one time.
I have one ahead, I, I've seen some money, but I have not gotten one.
My oldest grandson shot a one forty six thirteen.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, yeah, that was a nice one, he had a gun.
Oh God, he's a ten, twenty. He's probably. I, I had him fifty yards on there mate. Yeah, uh, he's on, he's on. Getting ready to spar with another box.
Yeah, hard to compete with that.
Yeah, he wasn't coming to a gun, Lee. Send anything, yeah. I was throwing everything I could.
He had what he wanted right there, no sense to look around.
Nope.
Some ladder really nice. Fifteen, sixteen inch box around. Oh, my, uh, my little grandson, uh, my son's boy, yeah. Shot a three pointers during youth time.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, it was a ride. I know, oh, he was so excited. I forget how excited I got.
Probably not.
Then I told him about it, but I don't care. So, I got a couple there. And I showed him the picture of it, oh, yeah, yeah. He goes, I'm gonna, on the way out, I'm gonna somewhere try to shoot that eight pointer. Whatever you want to do, I just want you to know it's here. That three pointer coming, okay, but can I shoot that? I go, heck, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, shoot him.
So much fun. And, uh, it's just a blast. Then we get all behind that, we're to play.
The store gets coffee every night.
He saved a lot in here.
Yeah, he's, he was, three o'clock. I got, I got in there about four o'clock.
Be there in the morning at somewhere. Oh, okay, I knew.
I was in there doing up coffee and everything.
Oh my, you're hoping that earlier.
Well, I'm, I'm usually there. Oh, my wife, honestly.
Ken?
Didn't they use to balance the budgets in final meeting on the back of the highway department?
Usually, yeah, that's why. It's official, I got resoluted by you. What's that? You, you guys, you guys agreed on resolution. That wasn't what I was following. I didn't even know it was going to be on there. Sitting there, you guys are working on it. Where's my name, what's that about? I've been resoluted. No, not at all, not at all. Uh, it's, uh. Uh, it's.
It's getting it's getting harder to get up. You know, and you know, once I'm here, it's not bad.
Right, right.
It sure's gonna be nice.
I don't have. Right.
Get here by six-thirty.
Oh, my God.
And I stay till four in the afternoon.
Right.
So. Well, you know, probably once I hit the month of November, that's when I start feeling. You know, cause I then it's like, well. Sheriff County said that night, it was last week. I wouldn't wanna be in the Sheriff County. They said till near midnight or past.
All right, get to finish one double holiday.
Of course. And then, yeah, I checked with Mel. I said, so, you know, what happens when I leave my sick, you know, my vacation? She said, you get paid all of your vacations. Like, you have more spots up there. And and she said, you get half. That's as bad as the town of Westfield. If I'm sick, I'm really. I'm sure your wife knows and I get every once in a while they get hollered at. Come here, you gotta see. Political. But I know he has a beat. He made one comment. He had a beef that's number years.
Who's driving?
With Sheriff County.
Who's driving?
Treated him unfairly, but he never sat in the place where he put that one. To make Gary. I wasn't gonna make you long, but me and the camera, I'll make Gary do that, but. Appreciate do that. I that's why I got a I felt my sugar getting low.
Yeah, I know.
Lucky my neighbor brought snacks. We had a filibuster for forty-five minutes. Yep, Scott, I'm ready to gavel in that. I need you.
Chuck.
How about a motion to approve the budget less one million dollars and leave Ron the assignment of making sure we get a million off and keep the levy limit where it needs to be. And whatever cuts he decides, if it's whoever, we gotta put our faith in Ron and Ron's our administrator and Ron can do it. He won't be happy about it. But that's my motion.
That was a very big bust.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
No discussion? Kathleen.
I think that's very unfair to Ron. I think if you wanna cut a million dollars, then you gotta say where you want it from.
Any other discussion?
I'm relatively sure that Ron has done something along those lines. I think it's sad that Ron does not have a written objective list. I'm sad that Ron does not have a written appraisal, but that was our failure as a board. And we have to own that. Uh, we've hired Ron. Ron is good at his job. And I know he's been thinking about what he can do with the budget down the road. I think now's the time. Let's do it. Let's give Ron the authority to make those cuts and let's be done.
I'm all for cutting the budget, but I think a million's heavy. Um, I go back on what I stated. We were up eight hundred thousand last year, so that was our starting point this year. Which is basically a zero budget. I wanna see it cut. There are justifiable increases and there is justified cost of living increases. I agree there are cuts that can be made. I think a million's a little hefty. I'm not so much concerned about Ron's choices and he's got administrator in his title. Uh, if it was up to me, he would, uh, he would do budgets different. And he and I have talked about that, but it is what it is. But I think based on last year's numbers and the justified costs that are in this budget, I think a million's a little thick.
Do you need a roll call or can I do this one for yours?
Which one you calling with?
I just wanna make clear what's being cited here potentially. You're asking me to cut a million dollars by Friday. Friday, knowing that it will very likely be on the backs of the staff because it will that will affect services. I'm just putting it out there. And I have no plan at this point to do that. So I will immediately, if that passes, go to my office and start working on a plan tonight. So. Judy.
I guess I just have a question. What Lance, what your number is that you're thinking? He's at a million. Where are you at? Where we need to be?
I would start at five hundred thousand. And I said start. Again, I don't have the answer. I would put it out in details. Um, I think every one of you has good ideas. They just haven't formulated it. They haven't sunk up with the individual motions. There's things that people have had said no to, but there were things in there that said yes. And I think most of us voted yes or no based on one thing, not the entirety of the motion or the cuts being proposed. I think they were just discombobulated. I think what we need to do is get a whiteboard, put everything up for cut and then discuss them individually and formulate a motion after discussion instead of just sitting there swinging at softballs and missing everything. Cause we're gonna be here all night, just one individual formulating a motion. We need to put the contentious items on a whiteboard, in my opinion, and discuss them out, the pros and cons and formulate it that way. And once we get a general consensus, make a motion and work forward. I would like to see five hundred thousand. I'm not hard fast to that number. If you can present them to me like I said, um, the numbers will be what they'll be. I know the budget has to go up. I mean, I think we all understand that. But I don't think this is our best effort. Yeah, there's been a lot of good work done on it. But my problem with the budget process is it's fragmented. So it's easy to say yes in a committee. And then when you put it all together, it adds up to one point five million dollars. That's the hard part. And that's why you sit here and say, well, we passed it at committee. Well, when you're passing an individual committee, you don't know the grand scheme of the whole county budget. So that's what now we have the whole grand scheme and we have to separate meet and chat. That's how I would do it.
In concept, I can agree with Lance, but the one thing I'll go ahead and say for us going ahead and doing this, that's a cop out on us. And we're putting it on Ron's back. That ain't right either. Ron brought us a budget. Yeah, shoot or draw, Ron brought us a budget. And you know what? And it's the and the department heads when it's head and brought us the budget. So, um, if that's what we have to go ahead and do, put it on a whiteboard, hammer it out. I say do that, but I I'm not in favor of going ahead and throwing this on Ron's back either.
Any other comments?
I agree with what Chuck said mostly because I'll go back to what Lance said in the beginning. You're a million and a half over this year. Next year is gonna be two and a half or three. We've been kicking the can down the down the road every year since I've been here. This is nothing new. Every year. Well, we'll get at it next year. And you need to take maybe a bigger bite out of everything this year so you can balance everything out a little bit better next year. Because next year, instead of looking for a million and a half, you're gonna be looking for two and a half or three. So you you need to do something. And I disagree with Dave. We hired Ron to do this. And we're here to either okay this budget or not okay this budget. And if they gotta go back to the drawing board, so be it. That's what they have to do.
Why don't we go and put up on the board, everybody throw a suggestion down there? We don't vote on anything, but these are places for Ron to start. And I'll start right now with two suggestions.
Finish this one. On the floor right now is to have Ron cut a million dollars off the budget. We, you know, I I understand your suggestion, but we're gonna try to clean this one up before the attorney starts swinging at me. You wanna repeat the motion, Kylie? Just so everybody's clear.
Um, cast this budget minus one million dollars and charge it for cuts.
Better call the board or I'm gonna.
You can move it on here.
Oh. Abby, thumbs up or thumbs down? Thumbs up. That's a yes.
We hold on majority votes of this. Seven, yes, no.
They had asked you out before.
Start off. Let's cut the crop educator position. Crop educator position. We adopted the motion on the county board. Let's drop the mileage to ten percent of the government allowed amount. Let's take one position away from the sheriff's department for right now. He can get started. And if he's gonna pull a patrolman off to run nine-one-one, that's gonna be on his decision. And let's drop EMS instead of two positions to one position. And we're just gonna have to deal with overtime or we're gonna have to deal with partial shutdown of stations.
A second for that.
I'm just, this is whiteboard. No, I don't wanna make a motion. I think we should just, everybody should just throw stuff up there and then this will give Ron a chance to where he can go with.
Completely, I'm supposed to be working off the motion and then go from there, right?
We didn't get no place for motion.
We rolled back.
Well, that sure oughta take that.
Gotta be a motion.
I mean, I you could make a motion to have people, you know, write areas that they want, you know, to cut.
Then I'll make that motion and then I'll put my numbers up there afterwards.
Okay.
Hopefully get a second.
Yep.
Okay. Scott, go roll the board up front. Motion is to throw ideas at the wall like spaghetti and see what sticks.
No.
Did I understand that correctly? Dennis has gotta be on the school bus at six forty or five forty-five.
You're gonna be described.
Oh, boy.
That's a loaded question, but.
We need a facilitator. We have an educator in the back of the room that can facilitate.
She's ignoring it. He gets the hate books.
Do we have a writing implement for the board?
Cheese sauce, we don't need green pepper and pepperoni.
Got a large orange drink.
A permanent marker. It would be a good idea.
Maybe it would be better to.
Would live it a number of times.
Thanks, Scott.
Did we vote on that?
No, you did not.
I think it's unfair to give. Sheriff, you haven't voted on that motion.
All right, before we get too far along here, kids. We have a motion in a second to throw these ideas onto the board and vote on it. Favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have been saying that.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we can carry on. Okay, yes. Dennis, shall we ask yours first and she was saying them?
Crop educator position out. Mileage ten percent of whatever it is the government.
Benray.
Right.
I don't know. You can do that.
I don't think you can do that, Dennis. That's why I asked.
You can either eliminate it or not cut it. I don't think you can just cut it.
No mileage for anybody. Okay, uh, one position from the sheriff's budget and one position from EMS.
You may know mileage for staff, do?
Nobody.
Nobody.
I don't think you can do that.
You got some better ideas?
Just brainstorm.
One position from sheriff and one.
Having is an idea, but I don't think legally we can do it. But I got somebody. I got somebody that can look into that. I've been looking at it.
Can you put an estimated dollar amount there?
Educator was about twelve-five?
Twelve thousand, twelve-five.
Twelve thousand two.
Okay. These are all approximate then. No mileage for county board members would give us what? Number.
The lawsuit.
What?
Meeting members too. I'm not saying about mileage for staff. I'm just saying any meetings, staff I'm not gonna touch.
Okay. One position for the sheriff.
You have no idea what it's gonna be.
Well, I thought we had a number for that. Stacy?
Yeah, from the side door. Eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand. Well, that's this one. What for one position from the sheriff?
You want like some of the positions?
Yeah.
Right, and then are, I mean, it depends on which one, but ultimately fifty dollars.
Fifty?
Put that mileage in there.
Pennies?
Hiring this person and.
Mr. Retcher here again. Chuck, you put that mileage in there, then you gotta change the county board rules.
Oh, you know, and it's.
That's a whole other day. We could do that, but okay, it's not my show. I'm just trying to help because it didn't seem like anybody wanted to scribe.
I'll come scribe. I just have to double scribe.
EMS. You keep doing what you're doing. You, yeah.
Is that a paramedic or an EMT?
I can just have a paramedic. That'd be much more helpful. They're harder to come by then.
So one position will be what?
One, you eliminate one to be for the EMT.
Okay. Okay, so how much? Okay.
That'd be three thousand eight hundred. Thirty-three thousand eight hundred.
I just wanna make a comment. We are not supposed to micromanage you. By doing this and telling the sheriff's department to cut a position and which one, the EMS cutting position, whatever, that is micromanaging. That is not our role. That is Ron's role in conjunction with the department head. We are overstepping our bounds. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney.
The the board is a policy machine. So, yes, you're you're here to set policy and the tone for the county. Uh, that's that's relevant here because one of the things that the county did a few years ago is hire Ron. Uh, and one of his roles is to go over the budget. So I.
Thank you.
I I think we are getting into the the too granular at this point. Yeah.
What about closing two AM EMT stations? You don't need three EMT stations sixteen miles apart. When you built them, that's ridiculous. One would run the whole thing.
Close one EMT.
Two, Lisa.
Two of them?
Well, we don't, didn't we already ask the Judicial Finance Committee to look at that for next year?
We did, yes.
Yes.
Anything else go on the list? I'm gonna throw one in that would go along with mileage, but I think we should be salaried. And then that cuts out Kylie having to do a lot of work. And we all get paid the same. We're all.
And we all get paid the same, we're all the same.
I think if you cut the two MT, EMTs, we're done. That's gotta be five hundred thousand.
Cut two, explain that.
Two stations.
Oh, yeah, if that one, if that one flies, we could probably go home again.
Uh, it's two million, how about just one of them, a million?
And you all do realize that our attorney told us we're micromanaging and we're living outside of our.
Oh, okay.
So, should we just tell him to cut five hundred thousand and go home?
Lance?
I disagree, and I'm not an attorney and big head and all that, and I, I get what Mary's saying, but I'm not gonna make a motion that says we do this, this, or this. I'm gonna add those numbers up in my head, and I'm gonna say, Ron, reduce the budget by three hundred thousand dollars, figure it out, if you wanna look at the board and steal my notes, I don't care, I ain't gonna micromanage it. But I need to see what the numbers are, so I can formulate a number to pass a budget, I'm not gonna tell you where to make the cuts. I'm gonna make a motion like he just did, but I need to have a sensible thought process, so I can come up with a number, is that micromanaging, Mr. Attorney?
I, I think that, uh, ultimately, sir, the, the board is free to do whatever it wants, uh, if the board wants to spend the, the rest of the, you know, the evening, looking at line by line, they're, they're free to do that. Uh, I agree, this is obviously super important, it's one of the most important things that you guys do every year, is pass a budget, so I, I think that you're all being very thoughtful. Uh, but I would caution you on just getting too bogged down in the weeds, and in particular, uh, I, I, I agree with the point that, uh, you, you hire these people like the sheriff, uh, you know, to, to make these decisions for his department. So, I, I would, I would be reluctant to be too heavy-handed when, when you're directing, uh, certain department heads, uh, you know, wh- wh- what they're going to do with their people.
Echo Lance, I think this is basically what Ron asked us for, and this would help Ron being thrown under the bus.
Ron asked us this weeks and, weeks ago, for specific line items and what.
I hate to go out on a limb here, but given the conversation and all the variables of variables that we are looking at in the minutia. If you give me five hundred thousand dollars, I'll figure it out tomorrow. I can cut five hundred thousand off, it is not getting greedy, but I can do it.
Danny, could I?
Stop getting greedy.
I tell you what, I can, I'm gonna play executive here, can I do this, Mr.? I'm gonna ask everybody in this room, one person at a time, one question, especially the ones that voted no on the budget. What would it take for you, so we're all on the same page, what would it take for you to vote yes on a budget as presented? Okay, it's a simple question, and we'll all get a rough idea, and I voted yes on the budget, so I think we're, my personal opinion is, we should trust Ron with the numbers he gave us, and let him work it through. We all know that we're gonna have to cut something in twenty-six, we all know that, because it's not sustainable, so that's my opinion, can I go to you next, Judy?
Sure. I've always been. No, no positions, that's where I'm at. Because we eliminated positions and then we brought positions back. It's just, I'd rather. Give to the employees of who we have now, um, work with them as best we can, but. I hate to bring on new people and then we can't afford them, and then. We don't, we have a very difficult time getting rid of them, if it's not sustainable.
Dennis? I can agree with Ken, but I'd like to have directed to Ron, and this can be done soon, attrition probably, is when a person leaves, that he. At HR evaluates whether that position should be refilled, and that goes through all departments. Leaving the stuff in what we have to, based on the sheriff's department and that, what projects, what we started, but when somebody leaves, we look with a microscope before we fill that position. Through the whole depart, through the whole county. I tried to do that now, Dennis, it's one of the, actually, the easiest things to do, when you're looking at downsizing, you should do it with attrition. But again, committees then decide to go against what I say, or what I'm suggesting, and they back, backtrack, that's, it's very frustrating for me. We can't go against you, Ron.
Who we have, they don't, we have, they have. Like I said, close two MT stations, when they built that, I was against that, you don't need three MT stations sixteen miles apart, look at Green Lake County, the rest of them, they got one, they don't have all them, three full-time stations sixteen miles apart? That's ridiculous, as I'm concerned.
No, I was.
Gary? You voted for the budget, so I.
I voted for it, sure.
Mike?
Well, I've thought. For years and years, that Marquette county government's too fat, and it keeps getting fatter and fatter. When you say you've put on a person here, you get rid of a person a couple of times last year, now you hired them back this year, they weren't even the position, some of them weren't even empty six months, then they come back and back and forth. And I think it oughta go back kinda way it used to be, and I know nobody wants to do like that, but some of these jobs, who used to come in here years ago, if he wanted to go to, to, for say, the land office, it was open three days a week. And you knew that when you called, because when you called the number, it said hello, it's open from such and such time to such and such time, okay? Um, I'm not saying they're not busy, I'm not saying nobody's not busy, but I think the government's way too big, I don't think there's enough population or money in Marquette County to keep supporting this. It, you're going broke, it's not are you go, are you broke, you are going broke for sure, and you can't keep going down this hill, and they've been kicking the can down the hill for the twenty-two plus some years I've been here. And it, it's gotta stop, especially since everybody's older now. And I mean, and when you're older, you need more services, I understand that, but you know what, that's when a lot of people, like in my neighborhood, they've been selling their property and moving closer to a hospital. That's just the nature of the beast, that's the way things go, and we hired Ron, and I think you do a good job, Ron, okay? But we're not supposed to be doing that, we're supposed to say, cut a million, you said you can get five hundred thousand tonight, just like that, so I know there's more cush in the pie, I know there is. So, that's why I said eight hundred, Lance said five hundred, okay? He said a million. That's what we're supposed to do, is give you a number and you take care of it, we're not supposed to be doing this.
Uh, I voted for, I, I guess, it, it would be one thing that, it, yeah, I'm just perplexed with this, I, I look at this, and we have all of our positions full in the county right now. But yet, I go ahead and I look at line item one ten, temps. Uh, you know, wh- why do we need those? You know, uh, but it, but then there again, it's Ron's budget, I, I trust him, and I'll vote for it, but that, that's one line item there that you could go and get into, uh, but, you know, take a good strong look at anyway.
What line item, I didn't.
Temps.
Oh, okay.
My biggest complaint every year since I've been on here is the bud, is each department has a budget, but they always keep coming back and saying, I need a new car, I need radios, I need this, I need that. If we're gonna have a budget, it goes on the list, and it'll go on for next year, you're passed up? Next year, I guess you're gonna get whatever you need. That's all my problem.
I support Ron's budget, I know the work that's gone into it, um. The only thing, I hate to say this, and I don't support it, but if you want to underfund the out-of-home placements and not be proactive, like Mandy said, that's gonna cut you three hundred some thousand dollars right there. But I don't think we should do that, but if we do, we're gonna pay for it next year anyway. But otherwise, I support the budget, I think Ron's done a good job, and I think it's good the way it is. And, and address these issues, and if you wanna go to referendum, then we can ask the people, and we can go.
Four hundred thousand.
Seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
I voted for the budget, and I vote for it again.
Scott?
Five.
Peggy?
Five.
Five million.
Yeah, right.
All you need is one more vote, to take the lowest four hundred thousand.
You're at the wrong table.
Can I chime in?
You sure can, Abby.
Okay, so. I would vote for like five hundred thousand dollars less, but my, my position is that if you don't fund the four sheriff's department people for a year, it's not like you can't do it in a year. If you don't fund the two EMS positions, a serious look needs to be had for EMS in our county, because at a half a million dollars, or actually, I think it's closer to six hundred thousand dollars in overtime. And I don't disagree that three EMS stations in our county is excessive, and it's costing a lot of money, so somewhere along the line this coming year, serious decisions are gonna have to be made on the whole EMS situation in our county, because that is. Drawing a huge, huge amount of revenue and then maintenance on those buildings, so I don't understand why holding off on new employees for one year, and then start making serious decisions about what's gonna happen in EMS. And holding the budget down for a year and figuring some of those things out, and then looking to hire for those four sheriff's department staff, I didn't vote for the separation, because I knew it was gonna involve hiring more people, and we were already over budget this last year. So, I would be okay with voting for, right now, five hundred thousand dollars less, and you could get that way with not hiring those people for one year, it's one year. And that's five hundred thousand, if not more, by just not hiring those people, and then you're not taking any money away from human services for those placements. But you're able to take a good hard look early, early in the year, about figuring out what you're gonna do to slash some of these other overhead costs, and get rid of some of this weight that. Needs to be addressed, that's why I'm not voting for the one and a half million out of the general fund, because I think there is money to be saved, but I also think that there is a way to get those positions for the sheriff, and to fix EMS. And then we could maybe get a little bit closer to a balanced budget next year, that's my thoughts, that's where I'm at on it.
Want a moment to ponder? Do we have a motion, no, we do not.
That's why I was trying to figure where everybody stood.
Okay.
Try to find.
Gotcha.
Uh, Peggy first, and then you'll like.
I make a motion that we adopt the budget as presented with a reduction of five hundred thousand.
Is it second to that?
I'll second that.
Discussion.
I think it should be more, but I'll accept that.
Lance?
Is that motion stated clear enough as to where? That five hundred thousand, and I don't mean.
I think that was as clear as mine, I think it was.
My question is, I wanna make sure that that reduction does not impact the levy.
That would be a concern, yes.
That's gonna complicate things even more.
Because if you reduce it by that much and drop lobby and guess the taxpayers are gonna be cut, why can't we have a little extra because we won't be able to see.
That's what I'm saying, why can't it just come off the money proposed to come out of the general fund?
I'm, I'm not following, I'm getting to that point immediately.
Right.
I need something more concrete.
This million and a half is over the maximum levy limit, correct?
But we're not taking it off the tax.
I understand that, but I'm saying, why can't the cuts come? Spend the full allotted levy limit and reduce the overage by five hundred thousand.
I'm trying to grab my hat. Yeah, I don't think that's on the books. I'm gonna struggle. I, I can, I can cut five hundred thousand, but there are some cuts that will probably affect the levy and some that will not. At, at this point, if you're laying it at my feet, I can't commit to necessarily any of that, I certainly can't commit to closing the station, it could take, you know, a lot of study. Uh, it will involve some cuts to staff in various departments. And like I said, I have a day to figure that out, and then a day to tell the people that their positions could be cut and or downtime.
Other than this question.
I just wanna remind this board that we've already vetted the separation in the sheriff's department, it's been discussed, it was voted on at the judicial public safety meeting, it carried to accept the grant funds. It went through exec and finance and passed, and it went through the full county board and passed, it might not have been a hundred percent majority vote, I can't remember, but it passed. And now we're gonna go back and renege on what we passed? What's to prevent anything from getting done at a county board level is if, just because something passes that you don't like, you're gonna continue to bring it back to get voted out and voted down? There are plenty of things that I've been outvoted on, that I wasn't happy with, but you know what, majority rules, that's the way our government operates. Sit here and say that we're gonna cut four positions out of the sheriff's department, because, you know, we don't like Ron's budget, we've already vetted that. The time to undo that or not pass it was way back, a year ago. Or this spring, whenever the vote took place. Not now. The same way with the EMS, we sit here at the judicial public safety meeting, I sat through two or three meetings, everybody on the committee has bent out of shape because the EMS budget is overtime, so much overtime. But yet, when we go to try to fix it by hiring more people to cut it down, you're not happy with that either. You tell me, what the hell are we supposed to do here? We need to vote on this budget. And address some of these concerns next year, and if we feel strongly about some of this stuff, which I have, I agree, everybody has a right to their opinion, and I'm not trying to say that you don't. But then we need to start this budget process in like February, and we need to decide what things we want to look at cutting, and if it, if we need to talk to our taxpayers, or if we decide to do a referendum, but the time is to address that now, not at the eleventh hour. We need to adopt this budget, people.
Like I said before, things change, I voted for the EMS when I saw the numbers in front of me, but when it comes to the full budget, it doesn't make sense and things have to change. So, there's times that you vote on the information at hand, and when it comes to a second vote, you have different information, and that may change your vote. But as far as making rules and then changing them later, I, I mean, things change. I can recall there's some things that you changed to rules, so you're kinda being hypocritical, because.
Why not?
Really?
You have a right to your opinion.
Yeah, I mean, there was a rule that you could only serve three terms as the chair, and I'm pretty sure you voted that out, so that Bob Miller could have another term, talk about voting things in for change.
No.
Yeah, okay, but yeah, so things change, boards do things differently, that's the way of government, we flex, all right? So, yeah, things change, information comes up, and you re-vote and you have change, that's what we're doing here, we have more information, we have the whole budget.
I agree with Lance totally, things change, because we made a decision five years ago, I'm with Dave, we made fi, we made a decision to build three EMS stations. We've been saying in judicial and public safety, it's not sustainable for Marquette County. Uh, it was, I feel, it was a poor decision at the time, it was made for political reasons, it wasn't based on the facts, as I've read them. And if things change, we have to change with it, admitting to change is hard, adapting to change is hard. Adapting to change is hard. But we don't have an extra year to wait. We have to do things, we have to make changes, we have to do it now. Anyone else?
Just, just a comment that, you know, I don't remember how long ago it was that Ron brought to us what the budget was gonna be. I mean, it's not like we just heard about it last week. Um, so there's been at least a couple months where people could have been bringing all of this up. And to wait until tonight, um, and then try to change it, I just don't think it's, is a good move.
Anyone else?
I could end it right now and abstain my vote, because I am not running next year because of all of this bullshit. So, if you want me to abstain, I'll abstain, and you guys can figure it out on your own.
End the discussion. Motion is to pass the budget for the five hundred thousand dollars, the, uh, the laws discretion. Once the effect doesn't pass, yet you will adhere to the decisions that I'll make, because they will be unpopular. It will affect services and some staff. And at this point, I don't have a plan sitting here tonight on what that might be, but I have to make those decisions together. And then I don't want any blowback from the county board with the decisions that I have to make, because you are putting me into a very, uh, difficult position now.
Yep, it's right in here, sis.
Abby, I hear thumbs up for something's on, on the top.
We have to close out to go into open meeting again.
Some of ours, due to the length of the meeting, have died.
I need Gary Sword's.
You got it.
Oh, you got it, oh, Gary.
Yeah.
How about, Lance, is yours working?
I'm still stuck on resolution. Hang on. I'm on sixty-four, twenty-twenty-five.
That's the one.
But it's not giving him the vote.
I do a yes or a no, I can vote.
Give me a little.
Yes.
Oh, you're gonna.
Has my majority vote, yes, nine votes, seven.
So, for tomorrow, I'll put out, um, a list of my private, uh, I need to talk to department heads first. To go with those changes that I'll be making. Um, and I'll take a look to them to do that directly. And I will put out this, uh, the minority of Friday, uh, change the budget. Potentially, but potentially, the under of services will be affected.
I'm gonna give an apology to Ron for being treated this way.
Andrew, back Monday.
Yes, we are.
All right, that's a little personnel of course. All right, you can check the back of the calendar, we have one resignation. Uh, our budget right now through the third quarter, we are seventy-five percent exactly on track with, uh, revenues and expenditures, so it's actually very good right now, sitting with that, with reflections. Uh, the city contract with Montel for law enforcement has been settled, they agreed to my, uh, revised contract. That, uh, will officially take effect, well, as soon as I can get the mayor to the site, that's been the problem. And then, I will, well, maybe not now, but I will be on vacation, or I was gonna schedule it for mid summer, on through the end of the year. We'll see. So, I plan on being here for the county board next month.
The report was submitted, hopefully you're given the chance to meet some of the other voters. I'm, I'm here periodically, so is Sean Griffin and Andrew. Uh, it's a pleasure working for all of you. Right now, we've got about two dozen, uh, active uh, items that we're working on for, for Marquette County, so we're, we're staying, uh, very busy on your behalf. That's all I have.
Also, calendar planning.
Did, uh, zoning this like yet, anything yet? Or, we send it? Right now, we're gonna keep it stable, but there is, uh, we don't.
Is there some other department than that, you know, like, uh, registrar deeds, if they have something they wanna bring forward, are we gonna leave it up? Okay, yeah, right now.
Thanks.
A reminder, there's a stupid plan with Allison, we'll be out on supper sixteen. If I miss anything, still today. I turn this thing.